I thought I saw a headline.
It's in our email?
Yeah.
A board email.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, like I said, I saw a headline.
No.
No, this used to be a shared responsibility.
I know.
Lately, it's been me all the time.
I'll get you next time. Don't forget anything for next time.
Well, but you know, but if I don't...
I won't forget.
And then, I'm here and Mr. McCucci has withdrawn.
I'll take responsibility. I'll take responsibility.
We haven't expected any major audience to...
Guaranteed that we have a forum at least?
Well, we did.
We don't, okay. This is earlier, we were touching out on the fourth person segment.
Well, can I ask that there's five for sure, Jenny will be late?
Oh, she did, she was.
Well, last night, I talked to Anita, she said she'd be late.
Good, maybe changed.
Who's late? You were her in conversation with Jenny.
Uh, my conversation with Jenny, they're like, some reading block.
Okay, well, I don't know what you're before or after her.
Good for you.
All right. We see.
She says she's... She's such a... She's...
Where?
Oh, no. She's not... She's... 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 She's...
I thought I saw a headline. It's in our email?
Yes.
A board email.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, like I said, I saw a headline.
No.
No, this used to be a shared responsibility.
I know.
But lately, it's been me all the time.
I'll get you next time. Don't forget anything for next time.
Well, but you know, but if I don't...
I won't forget.
And then, I'm here and Mr. McCucci has withdrawn.
I'll take responsibility. I'll take responsibility.
We haven't expected any major audience to...
Well, can I ask that there's five for sure, Jenny will be late?
Oh, she did, she was.
Well, last night, I talked to Anita, she said she'd be late.
Good, maybe changed.
Who's late? You were her in conversation with Jenny.
Uh, mine conversation, Jenny, they're like, some reading block.
Okay, well, I don't know what you're before or after her.
Good for you. All right. We see.
She says she's... She just said, I just got... She's... 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 She's...
Okay, well, I don't know what you're before or after her.
Good for you. Good for you.
All right. We see.
She's... 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 She's...
Where?
Oh, no. She's not... She's not...
She's... 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 Late. We got data that now she's...
They like...
Seven forty. Now, if you look at the...
Well, I'm really pissed because I believe...
I... Oh, I know.
And number two is he got here and there's nothing on here could be...
It just kept getting added.
He added.
It's... It's...
But he added. This is the one that always is problematic here. And always creates discussion.
Okay. I'm telling them to die, so far, well, not the problem.
So, there's a... On the street art player office, people in the audience.
So, the password is only just made?
Well, that's your password.
No, 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 because you're gonna make it...
When are you?
So, you put that one right there with his password.
And then, the... I... I'm not... I'm not on anymore. You get the rest of my team now.
Have given this away?
I have, yes, well, maybe I'll come back and visit sometime.
Wait, you've got nothing but eight thirty seven thirty?
I'm here usually anyway, so...
I'll get Popper up before you know it.
One person was very pleasant. That's the guy that is in the back, left-hand side, writing something. Plus, he was pleasant to... And then, the woman that was the child with the doll, too, that woman.
How are you?
I knew it.
I'm back.
That's what it is.
Sorry. I can't... 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 I can't...
It's what it is.
She got emailed about... 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 I can't...
You can't over like, otherwise, this ritual will be all over you like... Can I blank?
I just... I just... I can't...
Your comment is just this, my policy?
I think you have a...
Don't mind.
She's...
How are... How are things at Tohickin Valley now, nine o'clock?
Fine, yeah. The building looks great. It's really good. It's giving us better... Now, I'm sure it's like really teamed up and organized and nice. I mean, the teachers are better. Excited.
It's a one-year deal, hopefully.
But... Yeah, or it's not. It's here, it's...
We're here with...
Is he okay?
Is that what he said?
Yeah. Hello? The other thing is how does the night construction affect someone's schedule?
Exactly. I mean, it's hard to tell when the pictures that you get are like dirt. If not, it's supposed to be that stage of dirt right now or not, you know what I mean? But, um... What are you just... I'm talking about trash right here, maybe.
Oh, baby. There's a big, big expose in time that agrees about that. So, don't forget to share the bar jester. Share the... We have to let him... We have to warm him up.
Well, yeah, he is moving up, but what he got today? Ooh! And we... We have to have hopefully all the say-sales.
I want... Who's here?
Phil. He has a welcome message. He'd like to see his son. He's around getting his... Just since he got back.
Can we officially start immediately if we only have...
Without a warrant?
I didn't think so.
From... Oh, it's from since he got back, yes, it's... So... Trash... Following work policy, it's correct?
It is. We can't start from that. So, we can't start from there. Yeah. We're in fury. We're in a war. Thank you. Then talk.
I didn't... 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 I didn't...
Did you say no?
Yes, you know, I have...
Would you ask for... Do you think you...
I might have.
Are you with? That's the biggest question. Well, no, I don't know, I haven't... I haven't got her on yet.
For the facilities.
Well, that's true. Well, that's true. You should be able to play like against each other, poker against each other.
It should, as it's a regulation.
I have to give a finance committee report.
The Bahamas, so is that...
Jen's gonna be late. She's supposed to... We can't sign off a job, we can't start until she gets her... Or not, we have to start doing it. We cannot start a meeting, we cannot start an official meeting until we have a warrant. I know she's got a signature on her hand until she gets...
For a work session?
Sure, because it's not a official meeting without five people.
Right, right, can you do the work session portion of it?
The presentation...
What's the work session piece of it?
Like this, the superintendent's...
Committee reports.
No vote.
No votes? Yeah, I think, assuming that the board members would be meetable to that, you could do a work session. No official action, though. Can't approve minutes or anything? Or take public comment either.
Well, we can't take public comment.
No, because it's not a board meeting yet. It's just, you're just getting information, information, data from the presentation.
We said we should... We should just give her five minutes back.
What's Kaylin's... She's on her way?
She confirmed she was gonna do it. I don't know.
She'll be... Yeah, right. She's coming this morning. I know you just...
Here she comes.
Yeah. I had a little shorter... Hey!
It's not like the food, it's... It's shorter than the readout.
Thank you.
I... I... I'm... I'm... I'm...
Thank you.
I... I... I'm... 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 You're sorry, she's like that.
Thank you. Thank you. I didn't think it would work.
I don't know where that's...
I don't know.
The truth is contained in...
We just got... 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 I didn't think it would work.
I don't know where that's...
I don't know. We just got... We just got...
I don't know where that's...
I don't know.
The truth is contained in...
We just got... 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 We just got...
Okay. Chair, you guys?
Oh.
President. So, I understand... This is a... Who's giving it? Bro.
You're home for the game, huh? I can go play.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming into our Quakertown Community School District School Board meeting this evening. We're going to open up, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kern? Mr. McCucci?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Here.
Ms. Weed? Mr. De Liberto? Mr. Klein?
The meeting is being recorded by the board secretary. First, we're gonna go through the approval of minutes. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? We have some requests to address the board this evening, if you want to settle.
Carrie Long?
We're gonna limit public comment to about three minutes this evening.
If you wanna talk to me, wanna get the data a little bit... You got it? Okay. Okay, thank you. My name is Carrie Long of Haycock Township, and I'm here to ask for an exemption to Board Policy, Section 200 Code 239. Little history, I'm a Quakertown alumni, and when I walked the halls here at Quakertown, it was a little bit different. Our motto was enter to learn and leave to serve. I took that to heart when we started the Big Brother Program, Mrs. Stover here at the high school, when I joined the Navy, when I worked on numerous projects, including staying on the Booster Club here for, uh, Booster Club for four years after my son graduated, or even repairing soccer goals for the high school here when they were damaged at no cost to the school. We had a little change in our life this year. In July, we were approached to become a host parent for a exchange student. Our initial venture into this realm went in July, when we were asked to host a young lady that was very similar to my daughter, and at that time, we reached out to the administration and basically, the boxes weren't checked. We were late, it was after July 1st, and she was only 15, so she was not able to come here. So, we had thought that our exchange student opportunity for this year was gone. And right before school started, we got another call. A young man who was slated to come to this country to, as an exchange student, his family backed out, for whatever reason, they were no longer able to take him, and we were asked the last minute if we would take him, and we did. I don't know what you know about an exchange student, but basically, some of them know everything that's going on before they get here, and some of them don't. Antonio, who's been, is part of our family now, comes from Italy, and he found out the week before he wasn't coming, and then found out on Monday, he had four hours to get on a plane and come here if he wanted to come this year. He chose to come and stay with us. The agency put him with Faith Christian Academy, and unfortunately, that is not working. There are some differences in the educational process at Faith that aren't translating for him. To give you an example, he got an item wrong on a test because he couldn't put the Bible verse to a government action, and that was kind of very stressful for him, and it's not working out. He's gone on all the school trips, he's gone, he's joined the basketball team, and he's done everything he can to be part of that school, but he's not fitting in. The school is not accepting him, and he's not becoming part. So, I reached out to our administration here to try to find out if there was any opportunity for us to bring him to Quakertown. I have a lot of respect for Quakertown, I love what this administration and what this board has done for our school district. It's been an outstanding growth over the last 20 years, and I'm really excited about it. Unfortunately, our response from the administration was, we are restricted by the board, they gave us these guidelines, and we can do nothing to help you. There's no evaluation, there's nothing that says, is there any value, is there any opportunity for us by bringing this student in here? It's a simple numbers game, and that's kind of scary to me. If I were to foster a child tomorrow and bring him into this district, I would have to put him in the school here. But I have somebody living in my home for the next nine months who I am now responsible for, he's in a situation that's not working out, and I can't have a conversation with an administration because it's a numbers game, and that worries me. I honestly think, at some point in time, you need to look at the policy to determine if there are better actions that you can do with the evaluation process, but at this point in time, I'm here to ask for your help. Antonio comes from a scientific high school in Italy. It's not just a general high school. He's taking AP Physics classes at Faith Christian right now. He's had a 3.8 average, he's doing everything he can, he studies his butt off, and he's kicking a, kicking tail in all of his classes, but he doesn't fit into the school. It's a completely different situation that we didn't expect. He gets along with my daughter, awesome, my daughter is a sophomore here at Quakertown, as well as many of her friends, and we believe that he would be a much better fit here at Quakertown because of the program, because of the opportunities and the people, than he is where he currently is at this point in time.
Thank you. Um, Art, do you feel that you've come to a fairly decent conclusion?
Well, I'm just asking for you, I have to ask for your help, I have no option, okay?
Um, so, may I?
Yes.
Um, so, in this particular circumstance, and I'm going to open discussion amongst the board, even though generally, I wouldn't do that at the moment, but we're going to. I know that I believe for him to come to the high school, I believe he has to be 16 years old?
Correct.
Um, and that is, is that the...
He is 17.
He is 17?
Yes.
What, what is the issue with him not being able to transfer into the district?
When I look at the policy, I don't understand, because it says... Okay, go ahead.
Policy numbers?
It's Policy 239, and the policy requires that we be notified of the student and that the student enrolls by July 1st, and this was at the end of the summer, and frankly, like, we're very supportive of the foreign, of foreign exchange students that come here. We have another student here this year who's from Germany, and actually, Dr. Hoffman has a, an exchange student that came to live with her sort of at the last minute, but given the number of students in the high school right now, we didn't think it was appropriate to ask for an exception to add an additional student. We had 38 new enrollments above what we had expected in grades 11 and 12 at the end of the summer, and there's a lot of kids in the high school, so that was kind of the reasoning for why we didn't consider an exception or to, to ask for an exception to the, to the deadline.
As a community, though, we have to give education to individuals that live in our community, is that not true, children?
Yes, for residents of the community, exchange students fall under a different, different policy.
Is it because we think maybe the class sizes would be too big? I'm trying to understand, um...
We, we had anticipated having 1,663, I think, students at the high school this year, and there's 1,702, and that the high school is very full, and so it just didn't seem to be wise to add another student that we did not have to enroll. And the policy doesn't allow it after July 1st, so we were, we were following what that said.
The, I mean, your place of residence is Haycock Township, so you fall within the Quakertown Community School District...
I do.
Residence. Faith Christian, I guess that's within the 10-mile border?
We are busing, yes.
Right, so, um, there'd be no way Pal, a Pen Ridge would accept this student because you don't reside?
The problem I have is, my understanding of the rules are that I don't reside in the community, so Pen Ridge, Palisades are not options for me.
So, this would be more of like a transfer situation, rather than like a foreign exchange student, like originally signing up to come to our school not before a deadline, I mean, he's already enrolled in a school, and it seems to be like a transfer request, is that some sort of different rule, maybe?
I think that the, that the concern is, like, it's pretty clearly stated in our policy, and, and I actually had communicated the second time with Mr. Long, and, and understanding that, you know, we, we've had this conversation for a lot of different policies at different times, that it's been pretty clear that we've been charged to follow the policies the way that were written, and the conversation was that if at some point, we want to look at this policy and decide whether or not aspects of it need to be changed, but yes, we did look at the enrollment at the high school, and we did look at where other students were going, and as Ms. Edwards said, one of those students who didn't have a placement and was unable to attend Quakertown is currently living in my home, so I, I understand deeply how this works, but the, regardless of the number of students at the high school and other sort of things, the, the majority of the time that we had a conversation about this with Dr. Hunter was, what does our policy say, and it was, it was pretty clear that the requirements didn't, weren't met.
The, one of the things you'd stated was that the student came here, understanding that they were gonna be going to Faith Christian Academy?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so my question is, I guess, what made them choose to send him there?
He had no choice. He was with a family, supposed to go to another family, somewhere else, they won't tell us who or where, where that was. That family backed out, so their options are, where can we put them? We were a family that had been approved for the previous student, who could not come to us, is now at Pen Ridge, actually, so we were kind of an open door, and they asked if we would be willing to take him at the last minute. They made the arrangements, the CIE? CIE made the arrangements, put him in Faith Christian, and they pay, they pay his tuition.
So, that was the only school, because, because we have a policy...
Correct. Correct.
...that prevented him from coming here?
They didn't even ask here, they knew that that was the question, so they went right to Faith.
And Faith said yes, because they said yes.
Correct.
All right.
So we were the family that were hosting him, and they were the school that accepted him.
I like, I like that we, it seems like every meeting, we are talking more about sticking to our policies. So I do want to say thank you for that. I appreciate that we're doing that. I, I feel, though, for this, this student, this child, who is not getting the type of education I guess you envisioned for him coming here. And you are taxpayer in this community, and, you know, I personally think we should make an exception in this case, not to undermine our administration, who, they were doing the right thing by following the policy, so...
I'm not arguing that point in any way, shape.
But I don't know really how we would go about that, making an exception in this case.
Understand, I don't get paid, we don't get paid anything to host a student. There's no money coming to me in any way, shape, or form. His parents pay a fee for him to come here, and then we host him, everything is on us. So...
I would say, to your prerogative to make an exception for this student, respect the implementation of policy, as long as the board doesn't.
Could you repeat that one more time?
My thought is not working. I was going to say, since it's a board policy, that the board could by vote...
Make an exception to the policy for the student if you so chose. Because you're not making a blanket change in the policy, you're only granting an exception.
Would that be, would we need the motion for that?
What does that, and I mean, you know, I'm with you guys, my heart aches. The other side of my hat, my head says, what does that say about our policies, and what's that say?
All policies.
Do we start picking and choosing where we want the exemptions to fall?
I think we look...
I don't know, my thought is, do you kick this back to the policy committee and see if you can do an expedited review of it? I mean, you know...
I don't think we should need to change the whole entire policy, because it sounds like this student wasn't being irrespons, they weren't being irresponsible, he was already enrolled in another school, and that makes this a very special circumstance. It's not like the student is coming here for the first time, it's that he was involved, he was enrolled in another school, and that just is not working.
I believe the intention of the rule, I mean, my interpretation of the, would be, you know, well, we want to know who's going to enroll in high school before the summer starts, that way we can plan for it. And so, you know, you can't plan for maybe 10 foreign exchange students that just show up on October 1st.
Can I add just one other piece? I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but I do want to make sure that we, that you know that there are very specific rules in terms of immunizations and records that, that personally, I think we would need to make sure that we reviewed if you did decide to make a change. And that's part of the reason why the July 1 number is in there, because the rules for Pennsylvania school admittance, in terms of immunizations and records, are very different in different countries. And without knowing what the rules of immunizations are in the country that your exchange student came from, or that any other ones do, we, we spend that time in July and August, and for the other student that we have here, having our nurses review those records and make sure that things are in compliance. So I just want to add that piece of the conversation.
This is, again, he's already in the district, he's already in here, in the school system here. He is already a student in this state, in this county, locally.
Private schools do have different rules for admittance.
I have all the records, we have all the immunization stuff, we have everything done. It's been done across the board, everything is ready to go. I have transcripts, I have information, I can give you whatever you need.
I mean, when we talk about one student out of 1,700, I can't imagine that that would be a huge difference. And the second thing is, it seems like this kid is not going to be a problem for anybody. Seems like he's very studious, so I don't know. I'm okay with it, but...
I appreciate Keith's concern, because we don't want to be giving out, you know, exceptions for every story we hear, but in this particular case, I doubt the student was going to a private Christian school when he first came over. Whatever, wherever he was going, whatever family he was going to, likely was going to be the public school wherever they lived. And unfortunately, he came over with that understanding, but that fell through, and out of sheer necessity, they placed him here, which isn't working out. In this one, I share your concerns, but I don't think this is a big exception, nor is it likely to set a precedent.
Of course it sets a precedent. I mean, the vote's the vote, right? So I just think, I don't know.
Mr. Garten, because there are only five board members present, is a quorum considered the majority of these present, or does it have to be all five unanimous?
A quorum of the existing members here would be insufficient for a majority of that quorum to make an exception to an admitted student. Not one of the enumerated five votes that's necessary.
What is Antonio's last name, please?
Zeta. He's here in the room.
What's his name?
Zeta.
Can you spell it?
D E D D A.
If you were so inclined, would be conditioned upon meeting the other requirements with respect to transcripts, immunizations, anything else required for admission to a public school.
Okay. With that preface as an exception, could you go back and document what he just said? Assuming that he is eligible to be enrolled in the school, I'd like to propose that we make a special exception to the policy for Antonio Zed to attend Quakertown Community High School.
I'd like to make the motion, please.
I'll second. We can do it now, right?
Does anybody want to talk about it before we vote? I know we just did, but, no? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Antonio. We're happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
Sandy Hipoff? I'm sorry if I pronounced your name incorrectly.
Three minutes.
My name is Sandy Hipoff. I'm a resident of Richland Township, and I have a fourth grader at Richland Elementary, and she'll be going next year. I'm here tonight to make sure that Quakertown Community School District is aware of a health risk that impacts more than 4,000 of the students in the district. The Rock Hill Quarry, which is located, actually, in East Rock Hill Township, is within five miles of six Quakertown schools. The quarry has amicable asbestos, and if you do just a little bit of research on this type of asbestos, you will learn that it takes very little exposure for it to cause cancer, and children are the most delicate and affected of populations. The quick background on this situation is that the Rock Hill Quarry was reactivated in December 2017, when a company who earned the $224 million Pennsylvania turnpike expansion contract leased the quarry from the owner. Since the reactivation, residents around the quarry have been alerting the DEP to the fact that a vein of asbestos was actually discovered back in the 1970s. In December of 2018, one year after blasting and mining occurred, rock samples were finally tested, and more asbestos was discovered. Despite overwhelming evidence, the DEP continues to downplay the hazards and refuses to shut down the quarry permanently. Our own Commonwealth is failing our citizens, but we can do something about it. First, we need to educate ourselves. Asbestos fibers can travel far distances. Areas within five miles are at risk. Strayer Middle School is 1.9 miles away. Richland Elementary is 2.3. The high school, 2.8. QE, three miles. Sixth grade center, 3.1, and Trum is four miles away. This is impacting more than 4,000 students and faculty in Quakertown Community School District. Secondly, we ask that you help us by contacting our representatives and let them know that you are concerned about the potential exposure of asbestos from the Rock Hill Quarry. Congressman Brian Fitzpatrick, State Senator Steve Sanisario, and Representative Craig Stats have been allies of the residents, but they need to hear from us. The more people who reach out, the more motivation they have to hold DEP accountable. Finally, contact the DEP. Push them to shut down the Rock Hill Quarry permanently. The Department of Environmental Protection's own mission statement on their website says that they are to protect Pennsylvania's air, land, and water from pollution, and to provide for the health and safety of its citizens through a cleaner environment. Do not let the DEP ignore their own mission statement. For the sake of our students' help, health, please help me and those impacted near the quarry, which is the 4,000 students in our district, to hold DEP accountable. Thank you for your time. I did provide packets that have the actual evidence that was done by a geologist that shows all the asbestos that's there, how bad it is, and how terrible it is for our environment and for our students. Thank you.
Is the aspar, asparagus?
Asbestos.
It's been a long day. Is the asbestos in the air, or are we concerned about it being in the water table?
Both.
This is different than the pipeline, which is a completely separate issue.
Yeah, there's several things that need to be, DEP needs to be pushed on, but yeah.
Thank you for coming and speaking to this, I appreciate it. I'm sure other members of the board do as well.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Cara De Liberto?
My name is Cara De Liberto from Milford Township. Over the past several months, I've been approached by many people to consider running for school board, and I had given it much thought. I had the unique experience of seeing firsthand the amount of time and effort required to be on the school board. Late nights reading emails, reviewing reports, preparing for one's own committee meeting, and attending other committee meetings, researching and preparing documents, attending events within the district, being involved beyond your own student's school. As I have attended meetings or watched these meetings online, I've been appalled at the behavior and maliciousness of some. According to GreatSchool.org, being an effective school board requires, quote, "The board set visions and goals for the school district and hold the district accountable for results. One school board member cannot do the job alone. Effective school board members contribute their unique talents while collaborating and working as a team with other board members. The oath of school board director you took when assuming your positions goes like this, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Nowhere does it say it is my job to convince others to see it my way. I have witnessed yelling, disrespectful behavior, seen derogatory comments about other board members and administration online on community pages. When you were voted into this position, there was an expected standard of decorum, at the very least, being polite to each other. When feeling the need to call others out on an issue, resorting to name-calling issues on social media is not the best practice to address concerns, nor is stirring up anger and fear with untruths, like board members have caved on issues. Instead of acting petty and chatty-like, I encourage this board and administration to act with dignity and respect, set the example. Many people in this room jump at the first opportunity to name-call or berate others because opinions differ. This board administration potential candidates need to focus on one thing, what's best for the students in our community, prudent spending to better our students' education. Better-educated students have better opportunities to excel and become caring, contributing members of our community and our society as a whole. In the upcoming months, contracts will need to be reviewed and negotiated by this board. At the same time, parents will be meeting with the administration to research high school start times, as well as preparing the district families for eventual redistricting. There's a lot on your plate, and as community members, ours too. We need to be equally vocal in our students' achievements and successes in academics, arts, and athletics. If you're happy with how your student is doing, shout it out. There is too much negativity by a select few in the community, and people continue to believe what they read online is the truth. I beg you to do your, to do your research. Look at how successful our kids in our district have become. Our students have more opportunities to excel in VOTEC and traditional classes than ever. Don't allow yourself to be conned into believing the negativity and the personal agenda of board members against the administration. It's not good for the district, nor our children. Thank you.
George Del Rossi?
I'm back.
Good evening, Mr. Del Rossi.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for doing the, doing the right thing at the last meeting and allowing my daughters to attend the technical school.
Township or residence, real quick? Township or residence?
Oh, I'm sorry, Milford. Okay. All right, so they're really enjoying learning new skills that will lead them to a successful, hopefully, successful career. School's nice, the teachers are energetic, enthusiastic, and knowledgeable. Seems a very good fit. Unfortunately, many other homeschooled children may never have that opportunity if we change the homeschool policy. And you'd be taking away them rights. Parents have the right to educate their children, and we think this is the best, in the best interest of our children, to attend the homeschool, the tech school along with their homeschooling. Homeschool children, parents pay taxes in this district, and they also vote. We just want equality for all children, including the opportunity to participate in the vocational tech school. Quakertown Community School District acquires and owns 100% risk for the cost of a child's education, just by the fact that the child lives in the district. Homeschoolers save the district money. A policy change to exclude homeschool students for participation in Upper Bucks Technical School would exacerbate the Pennsylvania need for skilled workers. Governor Tom Wolf stated that plainly that our 21st century economy demands a technical, skilled, job-ready workforce. Many of the technical school classes are under-enrolled at this time. I think we need more students there. The district funds private schools to attend Upper Bucks Technical School. Why not homeschoolers, too? Quakertown Community School District mission, our mission is to prepare all students with the knowledge, habits, and skills they need to graduate ready for college or career and for engaged citizenship, all with the best value to our community. A lot, in the past meetings, a lot of the people that were in favor of changing this policy talk about the potential risk, okay? The fact is that the potential risk does not increase one bit by allowing a homeschool student to go to a vocational tech school. That risk is already there, just by them living in the district. Quakertown owns the full amount of the potential risk to educate that student, just by them residing in the district. It does not increase any by allowing them to the tech school. Final statement, this board needs to vote to keep the policy allowing homeschool children to attend the tech school.
Thank you, Mr. Del Rossi.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, or?
We have it as an item of discussion on our policy agenda.
Great, okay. Thank you. Is there a vote tonight?
I believe there will be.
Okay, thank you.
This is the second. And I think there is a suggestion from, we'll talk about it later.
Tina Wortman?
What is your township or residence, please?
Richland. Good evening. My name is Tina Wortman. I have been a taxpayer of this district as a resident of Richland Township since 2008. There was a lot of talk at last month's meeting about homeschoolers being a risk and a liability if you choose to support them financially at tech school. I understand that legally, you do not have to pay for homeschoolers to attend tech. With that being said, in other neighboring homeschool-friendly districts, students in the community are supported at tech school. It can be done. Palisades, Penn Ridge, Central Bucks are all able to support their homeschoolers. Here's the best part, Central Bucks hasn't had a tax increase in five years, and somehow, they still managed to financially support their homeschoolers at tech. No tax increase in five years, imagine that. Imagine that. I don't want to have to tell my children someday, when they are interested in attending tech to learn worthwhile, marketable skills, that this school board has said, "No, we will not pay for it." Families have moved out of this district because of this exact issue. Families have been forced to pay tuition for their children to attend tech because you have told them no. How embarrassing, Quakertown. Where is the community in Quakertown Community School District when you exclude students from education? I disagree with your attorney. There's no liability, there's no risk that cannot be managed. There is enough money to support all the children in this community who wish to attend tech, homeschooled or not. I do not accept that excuse. The excuse of not being able to afford to send homeschoolers to tech is coming from the district that has notoriously raised taxes every single year for 30 years, with no end in sight. The excuse of not being able to afford to send homeschoolers to tech is coming from the district who didn't think twice about spending $3.6 million on a non-academic expenditure a couple of years ago. We can afford AstroTurf, but when it comes to educating children in our community, suddenly there's a financial risk? I don't buy it. My taxes have doubled in 11 years. My family has paid tens of thousands of dollars in rent to this district, and you want to deny educational opportunities to my kids? If you vote to deny children this opportunity, then you have failed. Quakertown has quite the reputation within the homeschool community for being very unfriendly to homeschoolers. Now is your chance to change that and put students first.
Thank you, Tina.
Thomas Reinheimer.
Good evening. I live in Milford Township. I'm here tonight to also discuss the homeschool students' attendance at Upper Bucks. My wife and I started our plate back in December of 2018 for our son. We met with Dr. Horner to discuss our son's eligibility to attend the tech school. We explained the reasons of how we came to the decision of homeschooling our child and the situation that prompted it. In an email, which I have a copy of, Dr. Horner replied that he researched past practices and previous board decisions, and informed us that homeschool students were not permitted to attend. However, if we considered enrolling him in Quakertown Community High School as a cyber student, he would be able to attend the tech school. Given the fact that we tried the cyber program previously, it did not go very well for our son, we were faced with a very stressful decision. We certainly didn't want to place our child in another situation, which would be even more detrimental to his well-being, on top of what his already bad experiences. We also didn't want to hold him back from something he had a strong interest in doing, either. With a lot of discussion and much deliberation, we had to come to the decision to follow the only route we were given for our son to attend the program. Right now, he's enrolled in cyber, and he is attending the tech school, and he's doing very well in the tech school. I have read the Quakertown School District policy, which is policy code number 115, which is active. It was adopted in February 8, 1996, and last revised September 25, 2014. Now, you're just talking about discussing it tonight. The discussion that I see was proposed is you're going to remove homeschool students to be allowed to attend tech. And like I previously said, Dr. Horner informed us that that was already policy. When the active policy reads, "If a private school student or homeschool student is a resident of the district, the student is able to receive career and technical education under the dual enrollment provision of the school code." That is what you're looking to get rid of tonight. I have to say that I'm tired of hearing that, as a homeschool student, we are not recognized as a member of the, of the Quakertown Community School District. We live and pay taxes in Quakertown. In the beginning of the school year, we have to submit a notarized affidavit, along with a curriculum for our son, to the district. At the end of the year, we also have to submit an evaluation from an independent evaluator stating that he met that curriculum to be able to move on. As a homeschool student, we are permitted to attend any extracurricular activity that the school district offers. We are able to, my son is able to play in any sport that is for the district. And yet, as a homeschool student, they're not, they're not allowed to attend the tech school or any other extra courses like the AP courses. I have viewed the August 22 Supervisor's Meeting, and I'm sorry to say that it's disheartening to hear the path the district is going. It is supposed to be about the betterment of the kids and providing them with whatever path they want to choose. The fact that homeschool students are considered a risk is beyond me. With all that being said, I understand, watching that, that last meeting, that there are already four homeschool students that are registered and attending the Bucks, Upper Bucks Tech School, which I was told could not happen. That's why we went the route that we did with signing him up for cyber. It was also said at the last meeting that whatever decision is made by this board, that those children that are already attending the tech school would be grandfathered in no matter what. What I'm looking for is a little reassurance tonight, that if something happens with my son with the cyber, that he would still be able to continue to go to the tech school if we go back to the traditional homeschooling again.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify one thing. So, this is the second time I heard the risk word thrown out there. And, and it's not the homeschoolers, it's the risk.
Mm-hmm.
And so let me be clear with the audience. The risk is, is that if you open homeschool students to go to tech, what else would homeschool students then be able to do? And then what is the cost associated with that? And how do we accomplish that? So, it, and it, and it has nothing to do with whether or not, it doesn't cost us any more, you know, technically, but it could if, if the homeschool student needed some specialty stuff. Let's say they have an IEP or need a special IEP that's associated with that. That risk, that, that's a financial risk to the district. It absolutely is. So, it's just a matter of understanding, and I, I was the one that, that used the word risk.
Mm-hmm.
Understanding that risk and what we're willing to do with that.
Okay.
It's not necessarily that there, there's a risk associated. However people want to learn and however they want to educate their kids, I'm all for it. And if we can say that, you know what, it, it could cost us a half a million dollars, and as a community, we're okay with that, then let's do it.
Okay.
But, but you have to understand, all I was saying was you have to understand everything that goes into it before you make a decision on behalf of the community, because you're 100% right. Taxes will continue to go up as spending goes up, and that's what we have to, we have to try to wrap our heads around. And so, it, it's, it's just a balancing act to understand what's the financial risk, liability to the district in the worst-case scenario. And maybe the worst-case scenario doesn't come to fruition.
Okay.
You have to understand that. And quite honestly, it may take time to get to that endpoint. I don't think it should be done in a meeting or two, or in a policy. I think it should take time so that we can evaluate everything and make an educated decision on it, as opposed to just saying, you know, "It feels good to do something." Because it, it does. It feels great to say that every student should be able to do whatever they want in the district, whether you want to walk into school and take one class and then walk back out. You should be able to do it. I think it's pretty cool. But there's got to be, we've got to, you know, have some kind of rules and regulations and wrap our heads around what's, what could it look like? Not just necessarily tech, but if it's tech school, what if your kid wants to go to physics class next? What if your kid wants to go to, you know, so where, where does it stop?
Why, why does it have to stop? Why do, why does it have to be held back?
Because what are the, what are, what are, what's the liabilities to the district? You have to understand what the liabilities to the district are before you can say, "Yeah, I mean, we, we know that, I mean, are we going to be responsible for busting the kids? Are we going to be responsible for, you know, I mean, what happens when they walk out the door? Is there, you know, what's the responsibility to the district? Right now, we have responsibilities for kids." So, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of questions that come to mind from my perspective. Not necessarily the, I don't think we can, we, we should say without 100% certainty that we shouldn't look at it, but, you know, we have experts in, in the legal realm telling us, "You need to consider these factors." And, and I think that's what we're trying to do.
I understand that, but let's look at the other side. Okay? You're talking liability. I see less liability for the school district. The school district is responsible for getting that child to that class, or getting that child home from that class. As a homeschool parent, we assume that responsibility. We take care of that. He doesn't get busted.
You do, but does that everybody?
I'm speaking for myself, and I'm giving you the other side of the coin.
But all I'm saying is, when we look at an issue, we have to look at the entire issue and not just-
I get that.
-one particular case. And I don't want to get in dialogue, because we'll take forever.
Right. Yeah, I understand that.
I just think, I, I want everybody to understand clearly what my position was and what the position that we were discussing at Policy Committee-
Okay.
...was with regard to risk.
Okay. You know, two quick, two more quick points. Number one, you live in Quakertown School District. You don't pay any more taxes than I do. What's the difference whether my son is enrolled in Quakertown School District by your guidelines, or if he's homeschooled? I'm paying the same amount, you're paying the same amount, so where's that extra financial burden coming from?
If I could, I'm sorry to interrupt the good discussion, but I just wanted, and I planned to actually talk about this once we got it on the agenda, but since it seems relevant at this point, how many homeschool students do we have in the district? Can someone remind me? I thought it was somewhere. Okay. Now, from what I understood from the email that came from the solicitor was, and, and just for the record, I, I feel like if you pay taxes in this district, you should have access to, to our, our education system. And, and just as a quick side note, if you're not aware, Pennsylvania is amongst the worst in the country when it comes to funding education from a state level, and then on a federal level, it's even worse. There's very little amount of money that comes from the federal government. I think Pennsylvania is like 43rd in the country. It's something ridiculous. So, that means that it relies on districts to raise money through property taxes. So, if you live in a more wealthy area like Central Bucks, you, it's easier for you to not raise taxes, because you have more revenue streams coming in. But then when you look at a place like Quakertown that has a little bit more poverty, we are facing pressures of increasing expenditures, and we, in order for us to, to, to meet those things, the expenditures, we have to raise enough revenue. And I agree with the, what you said earlier about prioritizing how you're going to spend that money, and that's the challenge that we have every day, you know, coming in here. So, so that being said, I, I wanted to circle back to what the, the solicitor said, because the way I interpreted it, and I don't know if, yeah, it's not Jeff. I don't know, Jeff, if you had a chance to, to take a look at it, but the way it seemed to me was that it's, it's not as much of an issue about us affording the ability to send them to the tech school, but it does open up special education services, which I'm very sensitive to, and I also know that is one of the biggest cost drivers in, in the district and around the country, and that we wouldn't necessarily get certain subsidies from the state if that were to occur, and that was the big risk?
Speaking for where you had your correspondence, but obviously, the state's support of special education is abysmal, number one, and number two, that theoretically, I think you might not get state support for a homeschool student that's taking advantage of special education services.
So, that's the main, that's the main, I think, sticking point here, that I just wanted to provide some additional context is, I think all of us agree here, we would love to allow, and I feel like, again, if you pay taxes here, you should have access to that. And you shouldn't have to enroll in cyber or do something else silly. You know, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, did you know, if you go to a private school, you can go to the VOTEC? But you can if you're homeschool, and I think that's unfair. But I digress. But I think because of the way the state, the, the statute is written, it leaves our district in or at a risk of possibly, if those services were to be opened up, that we wouldn't get the subsidies that we would normally get under someone who isn't homeschooled. And I think that's just something that, that we need to consider.
Okay. And you also talked about policy. I understand what you're saying. You also talked about policy. Like I said, I was told that Quakertown does not allow it to happen, does not allow homeschool students to attend tech school. But yet, in this code, it clearly states that they are.
And that's why we are going to be grandfathering in the students, and we're taking that under consideration for tonight's vote.
And can I interject here? We're having a second reading on the, the policy in order to change it, to clarify, to eliminate the language for homeschool students.
What, so they won't be allowed to be, to attend?
Um, that's the second reading for tonight.
Okay.
Based on the Policy Committee meeting we had last week.
So, as it stands, as it stands right now, like I said, my son is enrolled in cyber, he's in tech school. If for any reason that my son, right now, is withdrawn from that cyber, and we go back to tech school, would I also be blanketed under that grandfather, where my son could continue to go to tech school till he graduates?
I think, I think by, I, my opinion is, when we talked last time, people would be grandfathered in, the last meeting that we voted on, that if you're currently enrolled, yes, you would be grandfathered in until you graduate.
That's my opinion.
That's what I believe it to be.
That was my understanding, too.
As it sits right now.
Mm-hmm.
The way you read it is accurate, and that's why there were students that were able to enroll this year under that policy. So, there was a, there was a, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was two different policies, and they were competing with each other, and then there was an AR, and there was, so we had to get that straightened out, and that's why people were able to enroll.
Thank you very much, Tom, right?
I have one other comment about all this. When home, people are homeschooled, or if they want to be homeschooled, but if kids have needs that are going to require special help, I think many homeschoolers would just enroll their kids in a public school rather than having to bear that themselves, because it's a, it's a very difficult road. So, I'm not sure if the risk really exists as it's being portrayed. That's my thought.
Appreciate that.
We're, we're moving on.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
If I could just answer that, because Mrs. Pollan would, would disagree. I don't know, she's here, actually. I was looking to see if she could answer the, the question. But the requirement could be for us to provide services in the home.
Well, yeah, that, that was-
As opposed to having a student attend a program that is already staffed within the school.
Well, and I have to interject here. As an attorney, I can tell you lawyers seldom are as clear as our solicitor was in this case about the risk to the district. This lawyer was extremely clear that we needed to change this policy, and his answer was, as far as allowing homeschooled students to enroll in tech, "No, no, no. You're going to expose yourself to all kinds of risk." So- Apparent, apparently not, and they may have more money than our school district does, quite frankly. It's weighing.
Thank you, Ms. Weed. And, let's see. Was that our final public comment? Superintendent report. Dr. Horner is not with us this evening, so Nancy Ann will be-
You will have to make do with me, but I am going to lose my reputation for speedy superintendent reports, because we did collaborate on the superintendent's report before Dr. Horner went away. In order to start, we like to recognize students for you each month, so you get to meet some of our students and hear about some of their accomplishments. And so, the first thing on the superintendent's report tonight is Adam Denny from the high school is going to introduce to you two of our, well, actually, it's more than two, right? National Merit-recognized students, so that you can meet them, and he'll explain a little bit about what that means, because they are the very high percentage of students in the country in terms of their performance on the PSAT. in terms of their performance on the PSAT.
Thank you. Adam Denny, I'm House Principal at Quakertown Community High School. First student we would like to recognize is Melissa Nung. Would you like to stand up, please? Melissa is a National Merit semifinalist, who is currently the treasurer of the National Honor Society. Melissa scored a 1550 out of 1600 on the SAT. Additionally, she participates in the Key Club, Mandarin Club, Math Club, and is captain of the tennis team. She plans to pursue a degree in medicine.
You said 1550?
1550.
Congratulations.
The next student we would like to recognize is Ian Cummings. Ian received a letter of commendation from the National Merit Committee. He scored a 1530 on the SATs. Ian runs track. Ian runs track and is a member of Student Council, Key Club, Math Club, and National Honor Society. Ian plans to pursue a degree in engineering. If I'm allowed to just recognize the other two students, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. Tyler Einoff. Tyler received a letter of commendation from the National Merit Committee. He scored a 35 out of 36 on the ACTs. He's a two-time captain of the swim team, plays volleyball, and is a member of the National Honor Society, as well as Naval Sea Cadet Corps. Tyler is hoping to attend the United States Military Academy. Sierra Lee received a letter of commendation from the National Merit Committee. She received a 1550 on the SATs. She is on the tennis team and plays travel soccer with Quakertown Soccer Club. She is co-president of the Student Council, a member of Key Club, and best buddies. Sierra is interested in the sciences and humanities, and plans to apply to the University of Chicago, Northwestern, University of Pennsylvania, and the University of Pittsburgh.
Thank you.
Mr. Denny.
I just want to point out that less than 1% of people actually score over 1500 on their SATs, so that's actually quite phenomenal, thank.
Wow.
Well, well done, guys.
Well done.
And I'm sure you guys have scored high enough that your percentage is even much smaller than 1%.
The next item in the superintendent's report, Dr. Zacken. If you want to come up with your team. And Dr. Zacken is going to share a little bit about the summer reading program that they did at QE, which was an awesome partnership in the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Edwards, and thank you all for your support and service to our school, our students, and our community. It's greatly appreciated, and I want to recognize that. And thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight about our summer literacy program. We wanted to share this with you and just highlight a program that happened at Quakertown Elementary School. As the, as the principal, working with the team there, we, we recognize a need for, a need for connecting our students with, with the skills and strengths and the books that, that we had, we had recognized all summer, or all year. We also wanted to connect them with, with our, our Quakertown Library, provide opportunities for a potential, a library card, and, and a transition opportunity. So partnering with these groups, we came up with the idea of SLAM, or Summer Literacy at Mitchener. And if I could, I want to just, before I explain the program, I just, I asked a few of them to be here as representatives to recognize. If I could ask the, the QE teachers, if you could, could you just come up front for me? Please? So we, so QE, like all the schools and, and no different, QE is, is full of dedicated teachers, and these teachers, I commend for their support for our students in this summer program, because without it, it wouldn't have been as special as it would. So thank you. I'd also like to recognize our Quakertown Rotary Club. Our Quakertown Rotary Club, and if fellow Rotarians are here, if you, you could come forward as well? The Quakertown Rotary Club not only volunteered their time, and as I'll explain, they, they read to the students, but they also were supportive in, in the planning, the execution, and, and the providing of really neat, neat bags and, and some tchotchkes that you will see later. Also, our parent group, which is known as Pi. It's, it's Parents Involved in Education. We have our, our Pi president, Mrs. Erica Story, as well. Mrs. Story and, and our, our Pi moms were extremely supportive when we came to them with this idea, and they asked, how could we help, and what could we do? And they, they too were phenomenal and instrumental in getting this off the ground and running. So if we could, can we give a big round of applause to all these people?
Thank you.
Oh, back up front, Mr. Weckelsblatt wants a picture. And, and as they're getting a picture, I'll
No, you got to be in the picture.
Yes, all of you.
I thought she got away with it, too. She was like, they're not seeing me over here.
So I just want to take just a few quick minutes to explain the program, and just to explain a, a real highlight of something great that's going on in our, in our school, in our school district. So all summer long, the entire month of July and the beginning of August, once a week for an hour, we met at the Quakertown Public Library, where the Rotarians, and let me back up. We invited at grade level a night, and Rotarians read a book to the students. And you can see here that, there's some pictures of fellow, fellow Rotarians reading a book, and they, the, they were, they're, we, we got really good at it with turning, giving a helper to turn the pages. But, but there was also a brief question-answer afterwards, where they asked questions and answered, and answers as it related to the, the book, but also what Rotary is, what, what service Rotary provides the community, and what Rotary is about, the great things Rotary does, but also what they do for a living, what their career is, what, what, what it takes to be in the field they're in, and the importance of education, the value of education. And kids were very engaged, and I think they were, we had some, we had some fun times with very unique questions. Then, Ms., and I neglected to recognize, Ms. Nicole Savitsky and Mrs. Anderson were a pleasure to work with from our, from our, from our Quakertown Free Library. They were phenomenal as well in getting this program started. And we, we also had them speak to, to the students about programs, resources available, things that were at our library for free, that our, that our students and parents could take advantage of. And what you can't see in the picture here, but there's parents sitting all behind them. And behind that was a table of books that they had set up, as well as a library card station, where everyone could get a library card on the way out. They did a little transition activity, or get-to-know-you game, so students could see each, you know, see their friends and get to meet new ones. And then the, the stars, which was really neat, the, the teachers, then were giving out, greeting their soon-to-be students, and giving out Quakertown Elementary bags with, with some goodies in them. And, you know, if you just think back to when, when you were a child, and how neat it was, and how exciting in the summer to, to see your friends, but also to meet your soon-to-be teachers, it was, it was remarkable. And here you can see our second-grade teachers giving out their bags to, to the students. And they were playing some activities and games, and just, just another touch point for our teachers. And it should be noted, and, and not missed, that we had 100% teacher attendance at this summer literacy program during, during Monday nights, which was, which is a credit to our Quakertown Elementary School staff. And here, I've asked Mrs. Detwiler to help me. Here is, we're going to give you a little sample of what they, what the, what the, the students and families received, a Quakertown Elementary bag with, they are, they're Oakley sunglasses that say Quakertown Elementary School on them. And, and, and you can see the story, the story that the Rotarians read. And the story they read was called Annie Elmer's Apple Dumpling Adventure. And just very briefly, the theme was a Rotarian four-way test, which has a lot of positive character attributes, which is very similar to our PBIS, or Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program theme. So it mirrored and matched nicely, and was very nice for our, our Rotarians to talk about that as well. This all, this, this program also, just so make sure, where we also got positive exposure for Quakertown Community School District, State, and locally, thanking Mr. Gary Weckelsblatt for, for, with the help with this, instrumental with this. We were, we were recognized in the PA Schools Starts Here, which was, which was really neat. And we were also recognized in the Bucks County Herald for this, for this program. I think, you know, we don't have, we can't, I can't quantify, but we probably had about just under half our, our student body at one point or another attend this. And as, as the summer progressed, we got more and more students. It was, it was really a, a special, neat program, and, and really neat to see all the different groups coming together to make this happen. That being said, I would be remiss if I did not recognize a, a very special person to Quakertown Elementary School as well, and someone who is, you know, the heartbeat of, of QE, Mrs. Jan Detwiler. A lot of things. Her 26 years of service, and, and so many things couldn't happen without her, and this is one of those, one of those programs. And, and if I could, you know, Quakertown Elementary School is a, a special and unique school for, for many reasons, and I want to make sure I highlight the summer literacy program that our, their teachers, our Rotarians, our, our Bucks County Free Library came together to put together, to just show how special it is. So thank you for the opportunity to share, and I hope you enjoy your Rotary, Quakertown Elementary School bags and sunglasses.
Thank you. I, I just want to add that my son, whom you may know
Yes.
Does go to QE, and over the summer, right at the end of the summer, before school, school started, actually, maybe it was right after school started, I don't know, he was so happy that he got his own library card. Made his day, special spot in his wallet. He's got the, he's got the special spot on his, his keychain where he hangs the little one. So excited to have it, and he's been checking out books and taking them back, and it's a thing. So thank you guys so much for everything you do.
Thank you.
It's fantastic.
Thank you, Dr. Zacken. And, and one of the things that I loved about the program Michael put together was the way the staff, the community, the library, it's like we drew on all of our community resources and did something together to benefit our, our students. So thank you to, to Dr. Zacken and the, and the QE staff. Next up is Dr. Kevin Kelly, who is going to take us through some training on trauma-informed care. And Dr. Kelly and the psychologists in the school district put together a presentation that has been very well-received among teachers at different faculty meetings and professional development opportunities. And so we thought that there would be benefit to all of you in hearing that same presentation. And Kevin, I will let you take it from there. Thank you.
And this is where I'll jokingly say, put three minutes on the clock.
That's a speed read. So, yep, thanks. I'm going to talk about trauma, and as Ms. Edwards said, we are doing some trainings around the school district with teachers related to the trauma-informed care. And that comes out of the district's initiative this year, where they're putting a focus on mental health. I really appreciate that. It's certainly up my alley as a school psychologist to have a focus on mental health, and, and I think that's really going to affect children positively, both emotionally and behaviorally, but as well academically, too. Because when kids are emotionally and behaviorally healthy, then they're academically healthy as well. So I am going to talk about trauma in the sense of we're trying to change mindsets, or at least introduce mindsets with teachers about what children bring to school. You know, many children that are really struggling emotionally and behaviorally on a daily basis, basis of what they oftentimes do bring to school. And I'm not talking about simple stress. We're talking about, you know, trauma is what's beyond simple stress. We all have simple stressors, day in and day out, family stressors, you know, work stressors. Certainly, the board has plenty of stressors, a multimillion-dollar budget, discussing things and discussing controversial topics. Those are all stressors. They're not necessarily traumas. But traumas are really stresses that go well beyond your day, day in and day out stress experience. They affect what you would call, like on Maslow's lowest hierarchy of needs, your basic needs, and threats to your basic needs in terms of life, in terms of food and shelter, in terms of emotional and behavioral safety. So to define traumas, we, we often, you know, in our psychology terms, use the term ACE, which is adverse, adverse childhood experiences. So we're referring to the term ACE. And that's defined as traumatic events that occur before the age of 18. Okay? And there's different types of ACEs. There is, there's ACEs related to abuse. So physical and sexual abuse, obviously, would be very serious traumas for a child to experience. Major family household challenges that go beyond just kind of daily, daily day-in and day-out stressors, like severe domestic violence or divorce, and neglect as well. And many of our kids experience all three of these, unfortunately, you know, when they go home from school. So adverse childhood experiences are really, you know, everybody, every once in a while has one, you know, in a lifetime, or, or may experience death in a family, or, or, we all go through some very serious traumas, even in our own lives. But it's the, it's multiple amounts of ACEs over the course of time that really have a very significant impact. And they have an impact on your health, really. Down the line, if we look at, if a child has multiple adverse childhood experiences, if, if we play that out longitudinally, it's risk of very significant health-related behaviors, negative health-related behaviors, chronic health conditions, depressive, depression, anxiety, post-traumatic stress disorder. So a whole range of things that a psychologist look at when we make diagnoses, when we're working with kids. Yeah, so to put it in perspective, two to three times, if you have ACEs, multiple ACEs, you have two, two to three more times, likelihood of depression, and three times more likelihood of a severe anxiety disorder. And these are the kids that are bringing those things, like depression and anxiety, into our schools. So stress changes your body. It's, it's, there's cortisol in your body increases when you have large amounts of stress. So, you know, with kids that have very significant traumas, there's, there's stress cortisol that's running through your body all the time, and that's what causes these adverse health, health effects then down the road. So, you know, some of the common adverse childhood experiences, the top eight, I guess, that we're seeing in schools, certainly poverty, because poverty can be chronic, and, and all the things that are associated with poverty create traumas for children. Divorce, especially traumatic divorces, when there's a lot of domestic violence or very acrimonious divorces, we're seeing that in schools. Traumatic death of a parent, or a caregiver, or a close family member. You know, living with somebody who's mentally ill, suicide in the home, certainly very significant traumas. Mental, alcohol and drug abuse in the home from the parent, exposure to domestic violence in the home, and, and community violence. And many of our kids, again, have, have multiple experiences related to some of these things. So a few years back, I was working with a kindergarten student. The parent was abusing drugs and alcohol. They had a meth lab in their basement here in town. So right there, so, and they were neglecting the child's needs. So you got neglect, you got drug and alcohol abuse in the home. Okay? Then the police catch up with the family. The family, both the mother and father are incarcerated, arrested. Okay? So now the parents are removed from the home. So now we got three adverse childhood experiences that the child is experiencing. So when the child's coming into school, you know, with his, no longer has his parents, when his parents were there, they weren't necessarily taking care of his basic needs. He comes in with very significant emotional behavioral difficulties. And that's when, you know, when we're, our, our first order of business as a school is to teach academics. It's very difficult when, when they're experiencing, the child is experiencing mental health difficulties themselves. So, you know, as, as a mental health professional in school, certainly that's what we do for a living. We, we work with, with children like that, our, our school counselors, our social worker, all, all of our mental health professionals are working with kids. You know, and know, and, uh, and to, to try to do the best we can to try to help them out. But we also want to have our teachers be aware that sometimes when kids have very significant behavioral challenges, at least to have, that they have knowledge and background that it's not necessarily some assignment that they're causing, uh, that they're assigning that's causing the kid's difficulties, that a lot of their behavioral and emotional difficulties are related to just things that are coming, you know, their background in coming into school. So, uh, in terms of behavioral impact, so obviously kids that experiencing a lot, experience a lot of these traumas have very significant behavioral impact. And, and, uh, when you, when you experience something that's very scary, your body reacts through fight or flight, you know, as, uh, as you could possibly, as you would imagine. So, uh, and, and you're, you, the reason you do that emotionally and behaviorally and physically is adaptive, because you try to, you try to escape a very dangerous situation, okay? Um, so to give you an example, I was out at Rocky Mountain National Park. I like to go travel and hike a lot in the national parks. Uh, and I was out at Rocky Mountain National Park with my kids. I'm obsessed with moose, and, uh, I like to go see, uh, various wildlife out there. And someone told me about a half a mile down the road, there was a, there was a moose. Uh, and I was like, "Oh, great," you know, 'cause I've spent a lifetime trying to look, look for these things, uh, to the chagrin of my family. Uh, and, uh, so I take my kids down there, and, and there's a group of people down there, and they're taking selfies with the moose and this and that. And, um, obviously too close, you know? I'm always listening to the ranger, you gotta be too far away. Even, you know, except a certain amount of yards away. Um, so the moose gets agitated and starts to run towards the, uh, the people taking the selfies, which is very concerning and, uh, dangerous. Uh, I see this, and I didn't stick around to see what happened, 'cause I was running away, okay? So, the reason I was running away is because it was an adaptive behavior to escape a dangerous situation, right? Your body reacts to fight and flight, right? And I was fleeing, okay? Uh, and, and your body reacts in the sense that you're all of a sudden, your cortisol and your adrenaline's running and, and, and you're acting out, uh, you're, 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 your body's doing that to escape this dangerous situation, and it's adaptive, right? Just think of the military, too. Uh, when we have military, uh, people that are, are, are very vigilant to dangerous situations in Iraq and Afghanistan, there's danger all around them, okay? Uh, there could be explosive devices all around, or somebody that wants to, uh, shoot at them at any moment. So they, they have a sense of hyper vigilance. They're always kind of on guard for what could be dangerous. Um, and that's adaptive, and the reason they're doing that is because they want to survive, you know? So it's the same with kids with trauma. They come into these situations, kind of in these situations of fight or flight, bringing in, uh, in, in the school setting. Uh, but unfortunately, in the school setting, it's not adaptive, okay? So it's not adaptive to fight, you know, at your teacher. So a lot of the times, kids will, will misinterpret things, uh, with teachers and, and view things as dangerous that are really not necessarily dangerous, like getting a homework, homework assignment and so forth, uh, and react in a very negative way. And teach, and, and teachers are saying, you know, kind of look back and say, "Where is this coming from?" Uh, and, and oftentimes, uh, they don't know the background of children, that they are coming from, uh, severe situations. So kids can react in an exaggerated impulsive way in terms of externalizing, externalizing behaviors, or enough, or, or in a shutdown way, too, uh, like internalizing behaviors like depression, anxiety, uh, or withdrawal. So, that's what we're seeing in school. A lot of our, uh, our, our kids, uh, behavioral difficulties for kids that have ACES, uh, their behavior is serving a, serving a language, okay? Um, and sometimes we don't understand what that language is, but everything that they're experiencing is trying to tell us something. Uh, and in terms of trauma-informed care, what we're trying to teach our teachers is to, uh, have that mindset to try to view behavior as sending a message. You know, you may not like the message, but the kid is sending a message that they're in pain in some way. Um, so we, uh, it's important to kind of take a look at and try to understand, uh, a kid's, uh, behavior through the language that they're sending. Uh, so here's an example. A few years back, at Richland Elementary School, uh, we had a kid that was really significantly struggling, uh, was having troubles in math, uh, and was also having very significant behavioral difficulties in math, too. Uh, and, and he would always act out during the math period, other times during the day, too, but particularly during the math. And we tried to figure out what's going on, you know? Uh, and we had, we do things, we, you know, we'll have a team meeting, we'll do things called functional behavior assessments to try to figure out what's going on. And we could kind of identify that this is, you know, the time specifically during math, uh, that was the, that was the problem. Uh, so we bring the parent in, you know, interview the parent, and the parent gives us a story and says, uh, they're, they're escaping a domestic violence situation in Brooklyn. They found Quakertown as the place to come to, uh, escape. Uh, and they, they enrolled their, their kid here. Uh, and she tells the story of, like, when they were with the dad and the dad was doing multiplication tables with the, with the child. If the child didn't get the multiplication table correct, you know, seven times seven, you would say 46 instead of 49, he would hit him on, on, on the head with a hairbrush, over and over again. Hit him on the head with a hairbrush, you know? Um, and it, you know, obviously traumatized the kid. So what's happening now is when the kid goes into math class in Richland Elementary in third and fourth grade, and he's presented with a sheet of multiplication tables, he act, he acts out, okay? Because it brings back and flashbacks of the things that he was experiencing in terms of trauma and abuse, okay? And a lot of times, the staff are not seeing this, they, they see, they, you know what I mean? They see this as, "Why is this kid having such behavioral difficulty?" You know what I mean? And, and, uh, um, and, and interpret that and take that personally, you know? Uh, and I guess my message that I try to, we're trying to say to the staff, and it's not to excuse behavior in any way, or, you know, uh, you know, certainly, kids that act out need appropriate discipline and so forth, uh, but to try to have empathy towards these situations, um, because the kid needs help, okay? And the kid obviously needs to work out a way to, uh, uh, express their, uh, pain in a, in a way that's more adaptive and appropriate than acting out in school. Uh, but we have to kind of look at it that way, uh, and, and, and work with the child. So that's what we're doing, uh, when we're going out and doing these in-services with teachers, is we're, we're coming down, uh, we're giving these kind of scenarios and trainings to try to give some background, uh, with the teachers in terms of, of, of developing empathy and, and kind of sitting back and trying to solve problems and, uh, and figure out what might be going on in kids' lives. So, we are teaching teachers how to do that, and certainly with them, we're working with kids and parents, uh, to try to teach them, uh, strategies and resilient strategies and how to deal with these very significant, um, uh, abuses and, and, uh, and traumas that they, that they're experiencing. So, well, the message that we're trying to send to teachers, uh, is that when you're reacting to a student's behavior with consideration for what they might be trying to communicate in terms of behavioral language, you're reacting in a, in a trauma-informed way. And that's what trauma-informed care is, uh, kind of the long and short of it, and that's certainly what we're trying to, uh, teach teachers then, too. So, um, you know, so we're bringing teachers in and asking them, uh, 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 participate in activities like this, imagine you're working with a student with ACES, and he or she is being defiant, and then if you recognize that the oppositional behavior may be coming from a place of fear, how would you handle the situation differently? Would you approach the situation, uh, with the child in a different way? So that's what we're looking at, is to kind of look at some, some mindsets, uh, in, in the way we're handling things. So, uh, some suggestions we're leaving with teachers is, um, certainly developing, you know, good practices in developing caring and respectful relationships with kids, with families. Um, the, a, a big one is not taking behavior personally. A lot of times when kids are having difficulties or acting out in school, it's not about the teacher or not about the situation, there's a broader, uh, difficulty that's going on in the child's life. Uh, so, so not to take that personally and, and, and give the chance, give the kid a chance to start, uh, afresh the next day. Uh, to stay calm and actively listen to kids and, and try not to, like, get into argument and debates, debates with children and, and, uh, know your own emotional triggers as you're coming into school, 'cause certainly we have traumas, 'cause sometimes coming into school in our own lives, and to kind of know those things, too, and try to train yourself to use appropriate tone and body language that doesn't escalate situations further with kids. And, um, uh, and, and these are difficult things to do, because teachers are working really hard, you know? They're, we have a great teaching staff here, uh, you know, they're, uh, they're doing a great job at the curriculum, uh, they have a lot of things on their plate, you know, and we're asking them, and we're not asking them to be psychologists. We have psycho, I'm a psychologist, we have psychologists and emotion, and, um, and, uh, school counselors on staff. We're just asking them to be mindful, really, uh, mindful of these situations. And if they can handle these situations, to, to, to come to us as a mental health professional, uh, to try to help the situation out. Uh, so certainly we're doing that. Um, uh, so I'll leave you with the kids who need the most love. We'll ask for it in the most unloving of ways, certainly as a psychologist, I see that. And I just want to say, I appreciate, again, that the district is kind of, uh, giving us some time as psychologists and counselors to talk about this publicly, and, and, uh, it's on the district agenda and to talk about it with teachers and, uh, you know, certainly in the, we, we need as much as help as we can, considering the future, you know, whenever you can, uh, we will take more, uh, resources, you know, uh, related to mental health, uh, psychologists, counselors, and so forth. But, uh, um, I appreciate the time, you know, uh, to, to talk about this and, uh, and, uh, and I appreciate the, the, the district's initiative related to it, so, so thank you.
Oh, yes, I'll take some questions.
So, uh, there's a lot of similarities between these kind of lectures and, and type of patients we take care of, I work in an emergency department.
Sure, right, right.
Patients come in in all kinds of states and minds, and it, and one of the things, and I'm curious is your thoughts, is I feel like when you take a different approach to situations, in the long, the tenure of your job, you tend to get less burned out. You know, for example, if I take care of, you know, five drug overdoses, and everyone that you wake up starts yelling at you and spits at you and curses at you, and you take that to heart.
Yes.
You're gonna hate your job after two days of that.
Yeah.
But if you recognize that this is an illness and, and, you know, this is not them, and you take a different approach to the situation, you could see it from a different lens, and therefore you want to come back and help them the next day, and then maybe the next day, and then you have a couple successes. I wonder, is it's, do you find this kind of education to be similar to teachers?
Yeah, oh, I think that's 100% accurate, Keith. I mean, you know, uh, you know, and certainly I'm talking to somebody who deals with trauma on a pretty regular basis, right? Um, you know, I, I do find, it's not just with counselors, but with teachers, too, you know? I'll come in, you know, and, uh, we'll go over the results of a psychological assessment sometimes that we'll do with kids, and, and we'll say, you know, "This kid is," you know, uh, you, you give the explanation to the teacher, "This kid has depression," or, you know, "This is what this kid's coming from in terms of what's happening in the child's life." Uh, and then the teacher gets the, you get the "Oh." You say, it's like, they come like, "Now I, now I understand." You know, and it isn't necessarily that, like, we're changing the expectations for the kid, but that empathy that the, that the teacher now has, that they may want to approach things in a different way with the kid. And, and your question is, does it help burnout, you know, for us as psychologists and counselors to, uh, to have those recognitions, too? I think the answer to that is yes. Um, I mean, we constantly have to remind ourselves, too, to not take things personally, and, you know, "We're in this business to help kids out, and, and the way we're trying to help kids out is to send these messages," you know? But we do have to remind ourselves, it's not just teachers reminding themselves, you know, as, as psychologists and counselors, we have to remind ourselves, too, you know? And, uh, I, I do think, like, kind of, in the moment, sometimes you get that stress yourself, you know, when you're dealing with those things. But taking a step back to, to reflect, um, does help, does help the situation, you know, that, to kind of give you the boost to keep moving. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thanks.
Doc, I want to recommend you extend your, uh, field of education to include the, uh, school board, because I, I told everybody here last month, uh, there was just a law signed by the governor, "School directors are now required to have an additional hour of training on the subject of trauma-informed education." It's law.
Well, that's why I'm here, Mr. Jackson, you know? Uh, that's one of the reasons.
Nancy, does this qualify as our one hour for this year?
We, we will figure out, um, what kind of follow-up activity you could all do in order to meet the requirements of the hour.
Yeah, but I, I, you know, I mean, Ms. Malone, when we were talking about these, uh, talking about that training requirement, that did come up, you know? Uh, and, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here. I mean, I'm, obviously, it's, it's twofold. One is that we're, we want to talk about some of the great things we're doing in schools related to this, uh, 'cause we're, we're proud of doing that in the schools. But secondly, you do have that training requirement, and I'm, I'm more than, more than willing to work with you, uh, on that, you know? So, other questions?
Do we have any numbers wrapped around this that can be shared with us someday about how many? I mean, do we keep track of that? Is that a number we keep track of? Would it be illegal to talk about it?
Of students who have experienced trauma?
Well, just like, what, what, do we have a percentage? Could we give a, you know, is it like, I mean, I don't know, is there national percentages? Is there?
There, there probably are national percentages. Uh, you know, we, the statistics we keep here in school are related. Sometimes if, if these things rise to a level that a kid needs specialized emotional behavioral instruction, like a special education-type program, we have, uh, 'cause that's where you really need to develop positive behavior support plans and other, other specialized plans to really kind of get a kid, um, you know, uh, through the school day. We have, we, we have numbers related to that. Uh, but, you know, we have kids that do have very significant traumas that are not also in our special education programs, too, that we might not be keeping track of as much, you know? Yeah, like, in, in a quantitative way, yeah.
Yeah, just wondering, you know, if you're talking about resources and the need in the future, how do you, how do you know what that looks like? You know, and if that need's going up? I mean, I think we, we recognize, now, I recognize in my field, I'm seeing more devastating things happen to younger and younger people.
Yeah, I think.
Some self-inflicted and some inflicted by others, but...
Yeah, I think the point's well-taken, you know, as school counselors and the psychologists to kind of document what we're doing, you know, in terms of, of, of managing these situations and training and things of that nature. Um, uh, because there's a lot, and, you know, and I, I, you know, this is increasing not just in Quakertown, but around the country. I can't explain why that's true, but, uh, the levels of, uh, depression, levels of suicide are skyrocketing, you know? Uh, so we're seeing it. I work at Strayer, uh, you know, the amount of kids I've seen hospitalized for emotional behavior difficulties has gone, it's gone through the roof in the past few years. I, you know, and I'm not a sociologist to kind of figure out why that's the case, but, uh, you know, to quantify that makes sense to kind of show, uh, you know, the board and the community that there, there is a need. Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Dr. Kevin Kelly, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Ackerman.
Great.
Everybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you very much. Um, and to, uh, your point, Mr. McCucci, part of the community safety committee, um, recommendations, one of those recommendations was to collect more granular data on the kinds of things that our, um, counselors are doing on a daily basis, meaning what are they seeing kids for, so that we can start to get some better quantitative data around what the students' needs are. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll, we'll be, uh, in the process of starting to collect data on an ongoing basis. It would, it would work something like, um, there'd be an iPad there, and when a kid signed in to see the guidance counselor, they would just click a reason, and, and that would help us, um, better identify without putting a lot of burden on the counselors, but it would help us better identify the, uh, the kinds of things our kids are, are looking for help on. Um, and, uh, Dr. Kelly did this presentation on opening day, I saw for Strayer and the sixth-grade center, um, and the staff in both those buildings, uh, many of those teachers have selected, um, trauma-sensitive classrooms or a related topic as their professional goal this year. And the faculties of both buildings are actually doing a more in-depth, um, Canvas course, kind of as a group over the course of the year, in order to delve a little more deeply, um, into the topics and also the kinds of strategies that will help them, um, support students in the classroom. So, we're really excited about all that, all that work and the focus on, uh, the mental health of our students. Uh, the next item is real, real quick, um, there is a 10-day enrollment update in your, uh, in Board Docs. Um, I apologize that it's a little hard to read because there's so much information that it's small, so I'd be happy to provide a, um, we'd have to actually print it on 11 by 17, but if someone wants to look at it more closely. Um, overall, we're pretty pleased with the class sizes, especially at the elementary level, um, and we seem to be in, in good shape with the changes that you, um, you agreed to approve at the beginning of the year to address the trauma second grade in particular. Um, so we seem to be, you know, in good shape moving forward, and unless there is a question later, um, I didn't have a lot additional to say about that.
Quick question on that, just real quick.
Go ahead.
I'm looking, uh, there's, there's several of these sheets on our Board Docs. They all seem to be similar, so I'm picking one out that I'm, that, you know, I want to ask about. The attendance figures at Poth, there's three classes I see, maybe four, but I'm looking at three with teachers' names associated with them. Two of them are under 25, one is 35. Why is there that discrepancy?
Well, as you can imagine, I had that exact question. All the data is reported from the building level, and in that particular grade level, the cohort of students have the same homeroom teacher and then go to math and real A-plus together, it's just the way that they sorted the students. On average, the class size is not that high, but it's the way that they organize the students in that building at that grade level.
So, assuming that we have 35 in a higher placement class because the kids can succeed, if that changes, we'll adjust?
I'm confident that we will make the necessary adjustments if that is not, not working well. Overall, I did look at this compared to the projection from last year, and we actually are 57 students lower. In other words, the decline in enrollment, the curve has accelerated slightly in 1920 over what the curve that was projected last year would have said. So, we're down 61 more students than we thought at elementary, we're down 18 more at a middle school, which is not significant. And at the high school though, as I mentioned, we had an influx of children returning largely from some kind of cyber charter or similar environment to 11th or 12th grade. So, we actually are 39 students above what we would have projected, and they, all of it is in 11th and 12th grade new enrollments. So, but despite that, the, the curve is continuing to bend down at a slightly accelerated rate compared to what we thought. And I'll have a full enrollment projection for 2021 in the next couple months, as soon as the state releases updated live birth data for 2018.
So, I mean, we only lost like a dozen students. I mean, the reduction, I mean, ultimately, after the intake in the high school, it's about a dozen.
From last year to this year?
Yeah.
We lost 113. Yeah.
But, did you offset the 75 that came back into the high school? You say 75? Is that what I remember?
This is, in total, overall, so overall, at the different levels compared to last year, we're down 123 elementary, we're down 11 middle school, and the high school went up by 38. So, the net change is 113 compared to the same date a year ago.
And forgive me, my computer decided it was time to install updates and forcing me, so I didn't necessarily have access to those spreadsheets. I'm staring over Caitlin.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's questions after you look at it, then be happy to address them.
Thanks.
And then the last piece of the superintendent's report is some, some updates around this year's goals. And if you remember, part of our board goal is to report more regularly and perhaps more thoroughly about all of the work that is going on, on the various goals during the year, and to try to give more regular updates. So, there's three little pieces of that this evening. One is on, on the safety goal, we have started the risk and vulnerability assessment process for each of our schools. We're very fortunate that Bob Lee got certified by the state to do those risk and vulnerability assessments, so at least for four or five of our schools this year, there won't be any cost, any additional cost to us, because he will be able to lead the team that does those assessments. The other assessments, we'll be contracting with the IU, who is having a team trained so that we can meet our objective of having every building have that risk and vulnerability assessment this year. What we did with that information, once we had it, because it generated a pretty substantial report, is we convened a small committee at the building level that included our, our SROs, our police chiefs, a teacher, a parent, I'm trying to think who else. We had a, tried to have some broad representation, reviewed the report, prioritized all the recommendations, got started with the ones that we could get started with, set some aside to incorporate in the budget for next year. So, point being that we're trying to have a very thorough process of using those risk and vulnerability assessments to actually get things done that improve, improve safety for our students and staff. So, that process is ongoing. I believe the sixth grade center is the next building that Officer Lee is going to lead a team in examining, and we will continue with that process throughout the year so we get, get every building finished. Another piece, when we thought about the data reporting and how sometimes when we, like, put summative data out there, it feels, doesn't necessarily feel good to people, and I, I felt like the board also loses the conversations around data and what we do with it once we have it. So, we're going to try something this year. We're going to have each building, in different months, come and talk to you about their data, and not just like a summative report of how everybody did last year. Like, that's, that's good, like, that's good information, but the directions to them are what, what we're asking them to do is pick a data set. So, it might be DIBELS, which they just completed the first round of DIBELS testing. It might be NWEA. It might have to do with their student perception data. So, the building will pick a recent data set and then come and share that with you, some, some positives they see in the data, some areas of concern they see in the data, and most importantly, what do they do with that information once they get it? So, when they identify an area of concern, how do they approach it? You know, and they use their professional judgment, of course, to action plan and decide, you know, what to do, but to, to give you a better sense of the story that the data tells us and to let each building come with some of their staff members and kind of tell their own story. So, I hope it'll be really, like, illuminating and informative for everybody, and we also thought it would, it would further our, our, our aim of having data be something like, we're all in this together and we're not just looking at summative data and saying, well, this is good and this isn't good, but we're really able to have more rich conversations around it, what it means and, and what we do with it. So, hopefully, you will enjoy that as we move throughout the year, and Trumbowersville is the first building that, well, I was going to say he volunteered, but he didn't exactly volunteer. I kind of said, "We're going to volunteer you to do that." So, next month, Trumbowersville will be coming and, and trying this process out, okay? And then the last thing that I wanted to report on with Dr. Hoffman, and unfortunately, Mrs. Pallone is away for the long weekend, she left, did she leave by 3:30?
She got there.
Okay, so she caught her plane, okay. She was not leaving at all enough time to catch her plane at the end of the workday. So, in any case, we wanted to share a little bit about a project that we've been doing this year. It's the Consortium for Mental Health and Optimal Development, and it was put together by the University of Pennsylvania, and I, but we're, there's four, I guess, the IU and three other school districts, and then kind of a mixed group from Montgomery County that are participating. And, and we are meeting monthly, and the, the topic is obviously mental health. Like, today, we heard a really helpful presentation and got a lot of resources on managing stress and anxiety that we are going to share, like, on the website and have available for families. But it's just been a really, sometimes things like this are, don't end up having a lot of value, and this particular one, I feel like we are really getting a lot out of that we can bring back and, and again, furthering our goal of improving the mental health and wellness of, of all of our school community. And so, I thought, like, so, Dr. Hoffman, that's my, like, introduction, and please talk about, a little bit about what we're doing.
Sure. So, like Ms. Edwards said, I think that, maybe I'll speak for Ms. Edwards and Ms. Pallone, that they were a little less enthusiastic than I was at the beginning about signing up for this. I don't know how to say that nicer, but I was like, "We are doing this and we're all going to be excited about it." But now that we've met twice, and we have a really awesome facilitator liaison who actually comes and meets with us here in between and provides us with a lot of support, this has really turned out to be a great way to serve our students and the community, while subsequently making sure that we meet the goal that we set for ourselves in terms of making some meaningful and impactful shifts in the way that we support our students, to help them get to the place where they are in that zone of optimal development. And I really like that Dr. Kelly shared that he was appreciative of the opportunity to focus on this, because I also am really appreciative of the opportunity to focus on this. It's, it's very rare that people in the curriculum world, myself included, get to kind of step away from just academic standards and start to think about and have the opportunity to talk about what we can do for our students on a daily basis. And so, I think today, we left feeling, maybe I was a little overzealous, but very empowered to start making some changes that we think will, will better support our students in the long run, and really just the opportunity to sit and talk about it and give, give that time to what does mental wellness look like, so that we're not always just focused on students who, who maybe already are down a path where mental health is a struggle for them. And really reframing for ourselves that idea of a proactive approach to all students being mentally well and what does that look like, has been really, really exciting. And so, I think that's what I would share. So, thanks for that opportunity, and I think it will benefit our whole community.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We look forward to Trumbowersville's presentation next week.
Great work, and I really like the class sizes, I have to say. I haven't compared them to the class size average on, from last year, and I haven't compared it, I don't know what the plus classes look like, but most of these class sizes in the elementary, you're looking at 20 to 22 kits. So, yeah, I'm very happy to see that.
And at this time, we're going to move on to the student report. Mr. Jake Burton. You want to introduce yourself?
Uh, yeah, so, um, would you guys like me to stay here or go to the podium? Does it preference?
You are welcome to stay right there, please.
All right, so, um, I have a set of notes. So, about me, to start, I'm a senior this year. Obviously, college is coming along. I'm applying to UVA, UNC, Wake Forest, Clemson and Miami. My goal is to major in history and minor in education, to become a history teacher. I've loved it ever since seventh grade when I had Mr. Weinstein. I don't know if, he's, he's awesome. That's really where I learned that I love social studies, and that's what I, that's what my passion is. So, currently this year, I'm taking five AP classes along with journalism and field study with Mr. Anderson, who is another social studies teacher. I'm field studying here for AP World History, and I'm taking AP European History with Mr. Anderson. Total of, throughout the course of high school, I will have taken a total of AP, 12 AP classes and nine honors classes. And I love, I love the workload, like, I just, I've had so much fun challenging myself and academically, like, I love school. Like, I, I just, I can't get enough of learning, and especially when it comes to history and social studies, like, that is right up my alley. If I'm provided with an English or social studies thing, like, that is, that is it. That's it for me.
I have some homework.
Yeah, I, if it's about history, give it to me, I, I'm, I'm in. But the activities I'm involved in, student, Bucks County IU runs a student organization, known as Student Forum. Mr. Ron Rollin is the coordinator, and I'm one of the, the co-chairs for this year, and I have nothing but great things to say about that program. It is, it is spectacular. The connections that I've made with others and hearing what has worked well and what hasn't worked well at other districts has allowed me to bring back beneficial info for the high school. And, yeah, I, I've made connections with other students that are also participating in Student Forum with me. There are a total of four of us from the school that go, and so, it covers all of Bucks County, and it's been such a great experience, and that was, I'm really excited for this year. And then, second of all, I am in executive council for student council, and that has been, in my opinion, the most inspiring and the most entertaining club in high school, especially executive council. My one friend, Nina, recommended to me that I apply executive, because we'd known each other and had been really close all throughout middle and, and high school, and I applied, and it was one of the best decisions I made in high school. Student council is so committed to, to bettering the community, and I just love connecting with others to that club. My, some of my closest friends I've met through executive council, because we, we meet more on a daily basis than, than general council does. Both contribute equally as much, but just the connections that I've made especially have been, have been great. So, high praise for that and for Mr. Sandler, our advisor. I am in NHS. That has been great. I've made connections with the two advisors, or the three advisors, Mrs. Kelly, who, who left for this year, but, um, she was one of the advisors, and then Mr. Birch and Mr. Farley, who I've had or have as English teachers. They're great, love them. I am a QE mentor, and so, Dr. Zacken can, can advocate for that. So, I don't know when we're going to start it up this year, but I'm excited, just send me over the details and I'm good to go. But every Friday, around lunchtime, we, me and a group of about 15 students head to QE from the high school, and, and we just spend recess with them, and we just, we hang out with them, and it's great, and like, we form connections, and it's been great. Because every once in a while, I see a kid that I've, you know, I met through there, through, you know, in the community, like, at the pool or something like that, and it's, it's really cool, making those connections again. And that's, that's really my big thing in high school, is just making connections, and that is, that has been my, my favorite part of high school, with teachers, students, community. And I think QE really epitomizes that. I'm a class officer for the class of 2020. I'm the public relations officer, so if you guys see class of 2020 on Instagram or Twitter, that's, that's me. I, I volunteer with VFW really often. I'm very close with Paul Gerhart. He's great. I, I've had great experiences with VFW. The one, like, I knew, going into sophomore year, that I really wanted to connect more with veterans, because I'm really big, as a history guy, especially, I don't know why, I just really draw to the Vietnam era, like, that is, that's one era that I'm really passionate about. And, and so, Paul fought in, in Vietnam, and he obviously supports a massive group of people that I, I can connect to in some regard. And so, through VFW, which I've had great experiences with, I, Paul also is the president of Baseball for Special People in Quakertown, a special needs baseball league, great. It just, it makes you reflect how thankful you are to be able to do these things and help out with the people that may not be as fortunate, and it's, it's just really rewarding to help those people and, and see that they are, are truly enjoying what you're able to help them with. So, that's been really, really influential. I'm a freelance photographer. I am in journalism class. I'm really, really passionate about that. I want to be a history teacher, but if I can continue photography as a side career, I would love to do that. Hopefully, when our first newsletter comes out for journalism class, you guys will see it on the high school page or wherever we're going to put it, but I, I take a lot of pictures. I'm, I'm at a lot of the football games. If you guys see somebody with a camera on the sideline that looks like a teenager, that's probably me. I'm all over the place, but yeah, I, I've, I picked up a camera, not this past summer, but the summer before, and it's one of the best decisions of my life, and I hope to continue, continue it for the rest of my life. And then this summer, I traveled to Italy and Switzerland with the Travel Club, and then also, I wish they were still here, but the Rotary Club sponsored for rising seniors to participate in Camp Nightig, which is just a leadership camp, which covers a really large area. It was like, probably an hour north of Allentown to about like Happerell-Horsham area, so it covered like a, a lot of southeast Pennsylvania, and it was great. I got to make a lot of connections, learned that when it comes to being a leader, it was only a four-day camp, but it really, it really left an impact on me, and especially that as a leader, it's really more important to listen than it is to, to speak, and I learned that firsthand, and I think that I will continue to use that, that lesson. So, I'm really happy that, I wish they were still here, but I'm really happy that Rotary Club and Mr. Magnitch elected for me to go. So, that, that was one of my, one of the best experiences I've had this summer. Additionally, on Tuesday, current event thing here, I interviewed Ryan Leaf, former Chargers, Cowboys, a couple other teams, quarterback, also played at Washington State. He, he was drafted number two overall in the 1998 draft behind Peyton Manning and is known as one of the biggest busts in NFL history, unfortunately, but he was there to represent Penn Foundation, which is a mental health addiction sort of support group, and they cover a lot of southeast Pennsylvania, and so, he was their keynote speaker that night, and I got to travel there early with journalism class and interview him, and it was, it was awesome, because I watched his E60 documentary a couple days ago to get a little quick refresher, and his story is so astounding to have gone from the top to the complete bottom when he was back in his hometown, breaking into people's homes to steal their, their Vicodin and other opiates, out of, purely out of addiction. He's, he's always been a really, really attentive guy, but he's really focusing his attention on helping others now, whereas in high school, high school, college and the beginning of his career, he was, he, he would say this himself, he was pretty selfish, and he's become a selfish person, and interviewing him was, was a great experience. And then, as for the community, fall sports are obviously in full swing, the football, the football games have been awesome, being able to take pictures and seeing the student section has been awesome, and that is another thing to note, that the spirit bus for away games have always been filled. Kids are always packing to go to the away games, which is awesome, and it's really good to see that, that school spirit. And so, this Friday, it's a home game against Wissahickin, gold out and blackout to represent childhood pediatric cancer. So, show out if you guys can. I know the football team would appreciate it. I know the football team would appreciate it. And so also something that's coming up soon is the Feed My Starving Children, which is taking place for the fourth year with Quaker Town at Delaware Valley University on Monday, October 7th, in which students help pack the meals for Mount Nurse children. Other events include homecoming, which student council runs. And so I will definitely be committing a lot of time to that upcoming on October 26th and then the NHS induction on October 27th. So I'm excited to see the new members. Students have been getting to know the new, the new administration pretty well, from what I've been able to tell. Mr. V is popping his head in a lot to classes and AP Euro, we were talking about his background coming from the Netherlands and we were talking about the EU. Because even though we're kind of in the early stages of European history, we're talking about the Renaissance. Mr. Anderson loves to talk about current events and so right now Brexit, obviously is a big current event in the EU. And so we were getting his, his perspective coming from Europe on European affairs. So that was really interesting. And then what else? The K-12 swipe system, although last year, the end of last year, it was a bit glitchy. It has definitely come around and I think it's, it's been beneficial and teachers have said that it's helped with attendance, so I can speak to that. And a lot of, I've been hearing from a lot of teachers and students to bring, with this platform, to bring up the vaping issue. I understand that there have been measures put in place to help prevent it, but I, I think coming as a teenager, it's, it's just, it's something that's, it's crazy. Like I've never seen something, it's not, it's not the school, it's just an epidemic that's plaguing the nation and I've never seen anything like it before. And it's just, it's tough to see like, when you're like, oh, like, you know, this kid's a really good person and really, and then you see that they're doing something that maybe, maybe they shouldn't have gotten into in the first place and you're like, mm. But I know that there are routine checks on places like the bathroom where they, it's been occurring a lot. And I've been seeing more and more people intervening to try and help. But it is definitely still a prevalent issue coming from a student. I see it a lot, whether it's at a football, not a football game, in the bathroom or out and about with kids my age. It's, it's definitely prevalent and it's definitely still there. And then I heard, I heard this and I just added this to my, my notes again. School start time, I know that's becoming a bigger, a bigger topic of discussion and as a student, again, obviously you probably hear this from a lot of students, but 7:10 is, from what I've heard, and I've probably talked to five or six other districts, it's the earliest that I know of, whether it be by five minutes, 20 minutes, or however many, or however long. But I know it is definitely the earliest and don't get me wrong, getting out at 2:10 is spectacular, but waking up at 5:30, coming from, you know, Spinnerstown to come to the high school every morning, it's, it's a bit taxing. But I know that coming into the morning, kids are prepared and ready to go. They're just tired because that's, I'm like, oh, you know, you see a kid down, you're like, oh, what's up? They're like, I'm just tired. So that's definitely, definitely a topic of discussion that I know will come up soon and I think that is a valid point to discuss. And then also with Student Forum, I wanted to bring this up. So we have an administrator, Senor Soto, who was my Spanish teacher and is now administrative intern. He drives us to all the events, but he is the, the only teacher to drive us to all of the events compared to, I would say probably 10 to 12 other districts that do attend Student Forum. So I was just wondering from, for personal reasons, like if, if we could like have a waiver that would sign off the liability so that we could drive ourselves because having to, to come to school and then proceed to go to somewhere in Bucks County isn't always convenient. And then also having an administrator who needs to be back on time, like a strict time back to the high school is, is a little bit like, we kind of rush around and being co-chair this year, I might want to stick around a little bit longer to, to talk with Mr. Rowland and my other co-chair and just discuss how the meetings went. So I didn't know if I could just advocate for that personally. Because it would definitely, it would definitely help ease the burden of going to Student Forum, which is again, a great organization. I love it. I can't say enough good things about it. But maybe it would help ease the time constraints for Senor Soto and us students. And again, just figured I'd bring it up. Didn't know what kind of response I was going to get, but yeah, otherwise I'm really happy with how this year is starting. I've been, I've been challenged, but I feel like I'm taking the courses that I want to take and that is the main thing because I am truly passionate about, truly passionate about the courses that I'm taking. And even though it's five APs, I'm really happy with the courses that I'm taking and the teachers that I have and the kids that I'm connecting with. So all, all good things here. Yeah, I'm very happy with, with how it is being a senior in Quaker Town Community High School. So thank you guys for the time and the opportunity and for letting me speak out about some of the great things that are going on. Appreciate it. Thanks, Jake.
So question, in regards to, not for you actually, about you. So in regards to students generally arriving to school and then leaving during the school day and then coming back, it sounds like that's kind of what he's asking because he's going to check in on school property, he's going to go to another school event that will be somewhere else in Bucks County. I imagine it's in Doylestown.
Yes. So most times, each month they're sponsored by a different school, but they're all run through the IU. Mr. Rowland is the coordinator again, so any.
So Mr. Rowland is driving to different locations every month?
He, he doesn't drive us to different locations, but he always, he's always the one leading the discussions at every location. So he is the one, he's the glue that, that puts together Student Forum, run through IU.
I thought you said that he drove everybody from Quaker Town to the event.
Oh, no. Senor Soto drives the, the four Quaker Town participants to the meeting every month. So that's, and I, from what I.
Different location.
It's in a different location every month, but they're getting the schedule out now and I was actually advocating that Quaker Town host one of the, because again, it's at a different school every month to host possibly in February. So that would be pretty cool. I hope we can get that too, but.
So right now the policy is because they check in the school, they have to stay on, with a staff member when they leave campus? Is that what the?
It's, it's not technically a policy, but in, in the best interest of our students, once they arrive at school and they're under our care, and that part of it is a policy, that releasing them in their own car to drive maybe on the turnpike down to Bristol Township or, you know, to an area that's unfamiliar to them. We have been asked about this in the past and we do have the luxury of having a beautiful school van that can transport students safely back and forth while they're in our care. So that really is, is our preference as an administration to make sure that our students arrive there safely. I think that there may be a way that we could talk about the timing of it and if it's possible that maybe, you know, we build in an extra few minutes at the end of meetings if they'd like to have some additional conversation. Certainly this would not be the first time that we've asked to try to host and so that would be great if one of the meetings was here so that we could even expand that a little bit. But it's not, it's not technically written that if a student goes to Student Forum, they can't drive themselves. But our policy when students are transported to us and then under our care is that if we're going to take them to another location, that, that that's done through us. We do have some, some exceptions to that. Sometimes we've had some students who maybe are in the, in our class with Mr. Carr, who have driven to one of our schools to videotape or film something. And, you know, maybe within district, we feel a little more comfortable with that, though we still try to stay away from that whenever possible.
Maybe. Yeah, I know that me and my three other friends that are participating, if there would be like a release of liability form, I know we would all be willing to sign it just for the sake of, of having that time. I know, I know, I know.
We also do have the concern that, that not, we want all, we want all students to have this opportunity and if a student doesn't drive or doesn't have a car or for some other reason can't do that, we wouldn't want them to be disadvantaged. That's just another, another thing to add on to that.
Maybe you guys continue to talk about that as time goes on. I don't think that's a board level decision, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, of course.
And we are moving on to policy committee reports. Ms. Weed.
We did a lot this past week, but I'll try to be short because Ms. Edwards has, or Anita? Someone posted everything on our agenda and it's all on World Docs. So everyone can follow along and I'm just going to summarize briefly. The first thing we discussed was Policy 115, which is the vocational education and homeschool policy. And as mentioned earlier, there was a first reading at the last board meeting. This is the second reading that's happening tonight. And what's going on with this policy is that the change in the language is being revised to remove the ability of homeschool students to attend the tech school and everyone that is attending is grandfathered in, as was decided at the last meeting, is my, my understanding. And the reasons for this are, they're largely risk reasons and the very strong recommendation we had from the district solicitor in this case. The second policy for a second reading is Policy 610, purchases subject to bid. And then Policy 613, cooperative purchasing. And Policy 618, student activity funds. And again, those are all posted on the agenda and on World Docs. The other thing discussed at the meeting last year as far as new policies or policies that are being updated is Policy 247 on hazing. This is just a three-year cycle review. Ms. Edwards reported that this policy had been reviewed by our athletic director, Sylvia Calza. Am I saying Sylvia's name right? I always, yeah, I always call her by her first name when Morgan was there. And no changes were recommended. So the policy's been posted and we're just updating it. The next is Policy 1014.1 on communicable diseases. This is a new policy that replaces Policy 314.1 and 514.1, which were obsolete. And when those policies were retired, the committee requested a policy with updated and legally compliant language. Mrs. Pallone has reviewed this policy. She's comfortable with it. And so this policy is up for first reading tonight, along with a legal review. And then Policies 314.1 and 514.1 are on the agenda for retirement. The other new policy discussed is Policy 617, which is on student debt. This is a new policy to incorporate the ability to utilize collection agency services for student debt that exceed a certain dollar threshold. And again, this is posted on your agenda and on World Docs. And the impetus for this discussion was lunch debt because we have some lunch debt that exceeds a thousand dollars for some students, even more. The policy addresses all types of student debt and the committee has been reviewed by the solicitor and is recommended by our chief operating policy. So it's up for a first reading this evening. And I believe that's everything. Did I forget anything? Okay, thanks.
Mr. Delberto is not with us this evening. Will someone be doing the finance committee report for us?
I have that, I have that honor. Thank you. The policy committee met on Thursday, September the, sorry, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Shows you where my head is. The finance committee met on Thursday, September the 12th. Finance, finance. Mr. Delberto, myself, and Ms. Mitchell are on the finance committee, although Ms. Mitchell has asked to resign from that committee. So Mr. Delberto and I will soldier on until we reorganize in December. There's two and a half pages here, so I'm going to ask Mr. Zacken to post this for the board to read, maybe an email, but I'm going to speed read through this thing real quick. So, Mr. Shock, thank you. I'm going to speed read through this so we can get through it real quick. Lyndon Ralston, our district treasurer, reviewed the strategy for 2019-20 for the investment of the district funds. Expected revenue estimated at $670,000, which is about $70,000 over the budgetary number. Review of the audit. Each year we get an independent audit. The firm conducted it for this calendar year was Barwick, Kane, and Thornton, which I believe they've been doing it for several years now. Everything is in order. I'm just going to leave it at that and go on. Mr. Shock examined the Act One estimates for this coming year, which were about 2.6 base. Quaker Town therefore qualifies for an Act One increase for those present at 3% ballpark. That's an estimate at this time. We'll find more about that later. We'll have to determine if we're going to opt out of any increases at a later date. There's a schedule of that procedure. I'm not going to go through that. Food service finances, we reviewed the statement for 2018, 2019, which is separate from the general fund. There was a net profit of just under $100,000, which was needed, given the fund reserve was down to $3,000 per year. Therefore, the final bad debt for food's finances was $27,054. That's talking about the food debt Ms. Weed alluded to earlier. We're talking about $27,000 in food debt for our calendar year, which was taken out of the general fund. Employment compensation carrier, Mr. Shock reviewed information provided by our firm of Heist Gibbons for unemployment compensation. The finance committee recommended moving forward on, well, I'm sorry, it was a recent, there were, Heist Gibbons was bought out by something called Corporate Cost Control, who was asking for their contract to be updated under the new language of the new corporation and that's something we were recommending happen. There was a discussion on something called Forecast Five Dashboard Reports. Mr. Shock reviewed that compared with data generation software. It's just another way to provide data, reports and everything. Substitute rate changes, we had a lot of discussion about that over the years. We did agree that we would change some substitute rates for teachers, aides, and nurses to pump it up a little bit higher, to be more in line with surrounding districts. Revenue sources, issue about selling ad spaces. There were two different plans offered up. The first was to sell more ad space on the, around the turf fields and the new scoreboard. The second was to sell ad space in the communication newsletter that our media expert Gary Westenbach sends out. We recommended going forward with both options, try and maximize our revenue. Act 153 update, the freezing the millage on preserved property. We reviewed the law again, the, what other districts had done. There's about 50 parcels that would fall under the resolution to have their millage frozen if the, if we pass such a resolution. It was a small amount, about $5,500 currently, but it would increase every year that loss of revenue if our taxes went up. Therefore, the loss of revenue that we don't accrue would go up. In about five years, that $5,500 would have ballooned to $35,000 of lost revenue. So there's still a little bit of studying going on, but the finance committee recommended not pursuing that revolution, resolution at this time. Then strategic thinking five years out. Dr. Harner asked the committee to begin thinking strategically to focus on a one to five year plan of how we're going to handle revenue, debt, the entire budgetary cycle instead of looking year to year, start having a long-term plan at least five years out. That concludes the finance committee report. And like I said, I'll ask Mr. Shock to put, post that to everybody's email so they can look at it thoroughly if they choose.
Moving on.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Kaylin, Ms. Mitchell, facilities committee report.
Okay, we met on Thursday, September 5th and we discussed a variety of topics. The first topic is our quest, our continuing quest, I should say, to find a permanent baseball field option. We've really been looking at this from every angle. The administration reported back to us that the concept of using the land on Station Road in partnership with Richland Township, it's not going to work due to that being preserved and open to the public. So that would have to be open to anyone and everyone. It wouldn't be, you know, a field just for QCSD. And we're asking the administration to continue to explore options and bring that back for us for review. So unfortunately, we have no permanent solution, but we are really looking closely at this and looking at a variety of different options. An update on the Nightig renovations. Everything, I'm proud to say so far, is on time and within budget. And we haven't had to dip into any of the discretionary funds that we put, you know, in case. If any of you were to pass by or see some of the pictures that we have online, it looks very different. And the contractors have been working very well together, which is great, and we're patiently waiting, or they are patiently waiting for the first delivery of structural steel. An update on our summer projects. We had a variety of summer projects, and the facilities team worked on this, and I'm happy to say that most of the projects are done with a few exceptions. The last project, the Field House at Q and B Field, has been installed, and the facilities team is finishing up on some site work, but the new building should be operational shortly. We had a small change order for the band tower. It's not an official change order, no approval was needed for that, but there was an additional $1,500 cost for the foundation of the band tower, and that, those costs were going to be paid by the facility's general account and not from capital projects. And I've heard that apparently not just the band is getting use out of this tower, a variety of different, of our groups are getting good use out of the tower, so I think that was a good investment for us. Toikin Valley, we conducted air quality tests, and although the facilities and custodial teams worked diligently to get TV ready to become Nightig Elementary School for one year, facilities was proactive and had random air quality tests done throughout the building, and all those tests came back negative. So that's a, that's a really good thing. Okay, now on to our lead and water testing. State law requires school districts to test each year or have a public discussion about lead in the water, and the facilities committee decided to test all the buildings last year and implement a three-year cycle for testing. So PAF, Quakertown, and Trum will all be tested in this school year. So we had a pretty interesting discussion on the facilities rental. The committee reviewed the rental fee structure, which was updated last year, and the focus of the conversation was around local nonprofit entities that serve almost entirely QCSD students, and those, excuse me, groups include groups like Ross, Rasa, however you say it, CYO, Quakertown Soccer Club. Under the revamped structure, these groups paid a reduced fee to use the facilities, and the committee recommended that these groups rent for free when practicing, but pay a fee when they're renting and generating revenue. So we felt like that was, you know, the more fair thing to do. And Zack is going to come back with some additional options on how to update the fee structure to capture the committee's thoughts. In the short term, the committee agreed not to charge these groups for practices with the exception of when they're using the turf fields, because turf, of course, is very expensive, and the more use, the more, the sooner you're, you're having to replace those. So that's one exception there. And so we're just trying to figure out who should be able to use our facilities for free, for what purpose, who should pay, but not so much, who should pay the most, and what is the priority of access. So, so we're working on that. We're continuing to work on that and hammer it out, but I believe we all came to a consensus in that meeting. If we're serving majority Quakertown students, we would not want to charge them for using those fields unless they were making money in some form or fashion. That concludes my facilities report. The one thing I didn't see on here, and because John is not here today, we also did have our very first goals committee, and I wanted to tell you all a little bit about that. The one question before I mentioned a little bit about that was, did everyone, I don't see an email that went out to the entire board.
So I'm just going to make a hard break here real quick in regards to the two different committees, right? We don't have a goals committee here, and it doesn't necessarily fall under facilities, does it? So should we have a separate goals tab in the future?
It's a new committee, so we should. I mean, I think maybe it was just.
I'm not trying to stop the discussion. I'm going to let you keep going, but just a hard break, I think.
Can we move to the end of the agenda? Like, new business or old business, as opposed to?
Can we add that under new business?
If you all prefer it.
Just for the formality? Yeah, please, I would.
But in the future, it should be in a standing committee report since it is an actual committee?
Report happening each month?
Yes.
I would talk to Stephen about having to require the report every month, but I think it is a standing ad hoc committee, and so it should stand under the standing committee reports.
Is everyone?
Yes.
It's reading, once monthly for the next, it's met last month, and the next two, that's it so far.
Cool. Why don't you go ahead and cover that now, then, now that we kind of came to that conclusion for the future?
Okay. Okay, so the first thing before I mention anything about it, and I will try to keep this quick. Did everyone in the board get any of the notes that, that John put together from our committee? Because I'm seeing here that they were only sent to a handful of us. And the reason I'm asking is because there will be some action that the board will have to take on this before our next meeting. Do you recall getting that?
I didn't get that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think it was necessary that the, they get the notes. The whole point of the, what came out of that meeting was for John to issue a specific questionnaire to the, to the board, to the full board, I thought.
Right, and he, but he sent us, without going into full detail, he sent us a draft email that we all approved, and he was going to send that out to the entire board, and I don't believe that went out to the entire board. Okay, so that's just something we'll follow up on. So just very quick, you know, we developed this goals committee to start the year off and start talking very early on about what we want to accomplish as a board, because everything, you know, stems from the goals that we set and the policies that we set. And so I thought it was, at first, it was a little, I guess, hairy in places where we were all trying to understand, you know, what is, what is, we're here for, you know, what do we want to accomplish? And we managed to figure out what, four high-level areas that we really specifically wanted to look at for goals, and that is culture, academics, safety, finance, and operations. And so there will be obviously a lot of subcategories that go into each of those. So main takeaway is what, we want to make each of the goals smart goals, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, time-based, realistic. And what we thought we would do is sort of, and Ron, if you remember more of this, we were going to send out all of these different categories and try to understand what is a priority, or what thoughts that each board member had on each identical individual, rather, category, and then we would find commonalities and consensus within the board, and that we would extend, we would, we would bring that back to the committee and try to finalize that and make it, make these goals more focused, I guess, not necessarily on all data, but just milestones, what to expect in the future. So we have, our next meeting is October 22nd. It is open to the public, and I'll follow up with John to try to make sure it gets out to all of you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Anderson, Education Curriculum Committee, report.
We did not meet, so I do not have a report.
Mr. Jackson, the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, and then you're welcome to flow right into the legislative report, as you generally do.
Yeah, I'm going to go backwards real quick. The Ed Foundation hasn't met this month, will meet again in early October. The legislative report, I have nothing to report because the legislature did not meet until early last week, so I didn't get a report from the IU, which is where I normally get it. The IU met last Tuesday, not just a couple days ago. I apologize for not posting the things I normally post, but they did do their normal bang-up job of educating students and teachers. And I do want to point out, Mr. Burton talked about the student forum. That's just one of the great things that the IU does that you don't typically think about, which is, you typically think of the IU as a special education arm, but they do so much more. And to stay on topic with something else that was bantered about today was the student, I'm sorry, the school start time issue. I attended a meeting just on Monday, or about student start times. It is a big push that's going through Bucks County right now. There's a lot of talk about it. In fact, and anybody who's interested, there's another meeting at the IU for the same topic on October the 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00, down at the Doylestown offices of the IU. So if this is something you're really passionate about, we had school directors from several different areas, and I'm sure there'll be even more this time. So if you're interested in being there, please stop by. Those are my reports.
Thank you, sir. And I shall report this evening on the Upper Bucks County Technical School. Last meeting of the Upper Bucks County Technical School Joint Operating Committee was September 19th. We kicked off the meeting with the official Upper Bucks County Technical School food truck launch. There were at least three students working the truck, and they did a fantastic job. The food truck experiment is an exciting undertaking, and I think it will benefit both the community and the schools and our students with learning and earning experience, as many of these students will be paid for their time on the truck. More to follow in future reports. The month's student of the month was from Quakertown. His name is Nathan Carlucci. He has a Mechatronics program, and he's a senior. Congratulations, Nathan. We had a great report on our adult education and night programs. There are adult education courses posted for the fall. They're on our website, and I also have some flyers for those adult classes back on the table by the back door. And Mr. Sueda's report, Jeff Sueda, he's the director over at the tech school, he listed his three positive takeaways. The start of the school year was great. The legislative day is October 11th, 2019, there at the school, and then the food truck kickoff started this month. We hired some staff for the year and tabled a motion to implement performance incentive pay for Mr. Sueda until the JOC could have more time to review his proposal. Donations reported this month total about $3,300, including a food truck sponsor, $1,000 from the Home Builders Association of Bucks and Montgomery County, and $1,100 in hay from Good Times Rental, thanks to Mr. Eric Turner. We also got a $1,300 worth of donations from heart mechanical and electrical contractors for welding supplies. We approved some funding for the Skills USA trips that are upcoming, including the winter breakfast was approved. That will be on September, excuse me, December 7th, 2019, and it is a winter breakfast in December, and you could expect some special guests. There were some subcommittee meetings on 9/19. Those minutes will be published on board docs and the Upper Bucks County Technical School's website, if you are so inclined to read them. Parent Information Night is September 26th. That will be from 5:30 to 7:00. We have eighth grade tentative tours scheduled, and the Quakertown tour for eighth graders is going to be in late October. If you think your student might be interested in checking out the tech school and they're in eighth grade, reach out to your child's teaching staff for the exact date once it's permanent. And the next regular JOC board meeting is scheduled for October 17th at 7:00 o'clock at the Upper Bucks County Technical School in Percasie. And meetings are obviously open to the public, and you can view all our prior recordings on YouTube. And that concludes my report. Moving on, the president report, and President Klein is not here today. I was caught by surprise. I did not prepare anything, so I have no report, unless you feel that there's anything I should say. Items for board action this evening. PSBA slate of candidates for 2020. The Pennsylvania School Board Association has a slate of candidates up for election for their president and vice president. There is one candidate for president and one candidate for vice president, and we basically have the ability, I think we have to do a roll call vote, if I recall from previous.
If you choose to.
You don't have to.
Obviously, when you had one opening and one candidate.
We just do a slate vote, and, and if it's consensus? Yeah, okay. So I'm going to make the proposal here that we vote on this by consensus, if there's no objection, for the slate as presented. PSBA officer elections, slate of candidates. I will try and spare all you guys all this stuff.
I'm going to go through it on this.
Am I obliged to read all this out loud?
No, I think you should just reference the fact that who the candidates are.
Okay.
For the two offices, as well as the trust trustees, which are also, and all the rest of the committees that have no, one is, Forum Steering Committee does have four people for three slots. So maybe you can proceed through the ones where you have the same number of candidates as you have openings, and come back to the one where someone would not be included because you have four for three.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we vote as a slate on the PSB insurance trustees, as well as the president and vice president. The president is Art, or the individual running for president is Art Levitowitz from Upper Dublin School District. The vice president is David Hine from Parkland School District. And for the two opening trustee seats, it's Kathy Swope and Mark Miller. Anybody have any objection? Actually, I need somebody to second that, right?
I'll second it.
Any objection? And all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. And then so we carved out the school board secretaries, where there's three incumbents for two-year term, and there are four candidates. Do we need to do this publicly, or could we save this till the end of the meeting?
This section is optional. You don't, the question is optional. You may select up to three, but if you don't feel, according to PSBA, if you don't feel you have knowledge base for the secretaries, you don't have to vote on them. It's up to you.
I want to make a motion, we pass on voting on these candidates, since we have done any proper research prior to being forced to vote for them today. Okay, any objection to that?
You can second it, sir.
Okay.
All right. To table, to not vote on it. We're going to vote yes to not vote on it.
We have voted.
All right, all in favor to not vote for board secretaries?
Aye. There we go.
All opposed? Okay, passed unanimously to not vote for the board secretary. Thank you for doing that. We are now accepting public comment on the fiscal items agenda for this evening. Do we have anybody for public comment in regards to the fiscal items agenda? All right, we're going to, a motion to approve the fiscal agenda, which will include the bills list for Bosch and James.
Motion to vote on that.
Any second?
I'll second it.
Bosch and James bill list.
Anybody want to talk about the Bosch and James list?
It's separated, so we made a motion to pay that, but it's a separate, if you're going to abstain, correct?
Question, question about that.
The only thing on there.
Well, go ahead.
No, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
My question is moved. Keep going.
I was just going to say it was the only thing on the agenda, so I, you could abstain from it.
Exactly.
Right, that's why it's separate.
Actually, we should probably table this until next.
What?
Because there's only four of us.
There's only four of us.
If you approve the payment of bill with the majority, you're four.
Yeah, this is not like.
You don't need quorum. You don't need five of the board.
You just need three of the five.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood that from.
I was going to ask the question, and I really, that's not.
Who seconded this? Kaylin made the motion, seconded it.
I'll second it.
I think it was Keith.
It was somebody, you did it first. We take it.
So we're going to take a vote on the, approve the fiscal items agenda. All in favor?
We made a motion.
We already did.
We already did. You seconded it, I think.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention.
Two in favor paying, four in favor paying the bills, one abstention.
You mean the budget, the James, the Bosch and James bills.
All right. Fiscal consent agenda. Oh, I realize the confusion, because when I said bills list, I meant the Bosch and James bills list.
Correct.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I was wondering why it was so confusing. Yeah. Approve the August 2019, motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda, approval of the August 2019 bills list, approve contract with the corporate cost control for unemployment compensation carrier, approve property tax assessment appeal settlement agreement, approve the contract with the Upper Bucks YMCA.
Motion made.
Second.
Discussion on any of these items. Discussion on any of these items. Okay, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Public comment on the human resources items presented for a vote this afternoon or this evening? Is anybody here to speak about the human resources agenda? Okay. The human, motion to approve the human resources consent agenda as presented?
The moved.
You have to read them.
And I will read them all. Thank you. Employee contracts and salary list, resolution to approve the First Amendment employee contract, resolution to approve First Amendment employee contract for Nancy Edwards. The first one prior to that was for Dr. Harner. And then Ms., Dr. Hoffman will be the third resolution to approve Second Amendment of employment contract. Contract with Bucks County Intermediate Union for interim services, addendum to the ESS Source for Teachers contract, human resource agenda for professional staff, supervisory technology staff, support staff, unit pay, substitute staff, game workers. Motion to approve the agenda, consent agenda as presented, to replace the first one you did.
Yep, second.
Okay. Any board members want to talk about any of these particular items before we vote on them?
Yes. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the changes with the contract. It appears when I reviewed it, the only changes are to two different lump sums rather than one.
Which contract specifically?
So we're talking right now about, yeah, the superintendent and assistant superintendents contract. Currently, the way that it states is that they will receive annual contributions of 5% of their base salary to be made to an eligible 403B account. And as it states today, it's deposited in one lump sum, but now we're moving it to two. Am I--
So what we did, it aligns with the change to the Act 93 agreement. The recent ruling from Peasars stated, we used to pay these per the contract in salary. Peasars ruled it's no longer ineligible. It doesn't count towards retirement, so we decided it doesn't make sense to do it that way anymore. It makes sense just to make the contribution directly into the 403B rather than pay it in salary. So it aligns with what we did with the Act 93. It doesn't represent any increase in compensation whatsoever. It actually saves the district money because we don't pay some payroll taxes on it now. And we decided to do it in two lump sums rather than one, really because if somebody resigns or retired mid-year, we don't want to have to try to collect money back. So to mitigate that, we said we'll pay half of it upfront. We'll pay the other half midway through the year.
It, I thought it was under the 403B previous--
It, what we did before is we paid it to the employee in salary, and we expected them to put money into their 403B.
Okay, but they didn't have to.
So we sort of, we sort of cut out the middle--
Okay.
The middle person now, and we're putting it directly into the 403B as an employer contribution. Yep.
Got it.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Public comment on policies and program items presented for a vote. And we are going to--
Don't worry about it, I'll be short.
All right. Mr. Spear, you can go first. Sir, you are second. And then I saw two hands go up back there.
Okay.
Dila, Del Rossi, I'm so sorry, I tried without looking. Ms. Del Rossi, you can go third. Mr. Del Rossi, did you want to speak as well?
Yes.
And your daughter, presumably, you're all going to speak.
Yes.
Okay. Then--
Mr. Sherman.
Mr. Sherman, I'm so sorry. Did you have your hand up as well? Would you go after them? Thank you. All right, three minutes. Mr. Spear.
Chris Spear, Melford Township. Actually, really wanted Keith to hear this too, but I actually agree with Mr. Anderson on what he had said before, that allowing kids into the tech school that are homeschooled is not something that is so much of a risk. It's not something that's happened very often. It has been the board's policy for 22 years, since 1996, and it hasn't broken the school district's budget. The school district hasn't gone bankrupt. The lawyer's recommendation to you is full of fear. It's stuff that could happen, not stuff that will happen. You know, the fact that so many other districts are doing this means that it can be done. It certainly can be done. Just because you initiate this policy, or if you vote on this policy tonight to exclude these kids, you're not just opening the door for every kid with a severe IU to come into the district and bankrupt the district. Not all 200 of those homeschooled kids are going to suddenly start knocking on the door and cost the district $22,000 each. That's not going to happen. For 22 years, this policy has been this way, and it hasn't been taken advantage. It hasn't bankrupted the district. We can do this. Now, we could, we could craft this policy to just include homeschooled kids into the tech school and kind of close the door for anything else for now. And anything else could then be, if it's challenged, then be addressed. Would that be correct, solicitor?
I was not the one that rendered the opinion.
Yeah, no, I--
I mean, in all depends, I would suggest that if the board's inclined to consider that, that you would table it and confer with your special ed council, who was the one that rendered the opinion.
Yeah, and I, like I said, for 22 years, it hasn't bankrupted the district. It's not going to now. You know, if Penridge and Palisades are both doing it, and they're sharing the same tech school, we should be able to do it. We have to do it. I mean, it looks terrible for us to not do it. So, thank you.
Am I allowed, should we wait for, you can--
Let's wait for discussion.
Well, no, no, not discussion. What I was actually going to say is, can I motion to table this? I'll be honest, I don't feel comfortable without majority of the board, like, there's a good amount of us not here tonight, and I feel like--
I'm just saying, you're in public contact, you're out of--
So that's what I'm saying.
You can ask me if you want, I'll give you my opinion.
So what I'm saying is, yes, I need to wait for a motion for that after public comment. Is that, or can I motion for that now, or?
Let's wait till after public comment. Until we get into the consent agenda.
Well, can I? I'm just asking.
You can move the table anytime during any discussion, whether it's public comment or board discussion. It's the prerogative of the board, whether you wait for public comment before you take any action, whether it's approved, disapproved, or tabled. That's up to the--
And the main reason I'm saying that is I don't want to waste people's time to speak right now if I'm going to mention to table it anyway. So I'd like to motion to table this until--
I'd like to hear what everybody has to say. I'm not saying I wouldn't table--
Yeah, but procedurally, I'm allowed to do so, and that's why I'm doing so.
The reason to do it would be to save these people--
Correct.
But I'm sure you have lots you want to say.
Yes.
But if we're going to table it till the next meeting, you can come back to the next meeting and say the same thing. That's going to save us some time.
That's exactly right.
Email for this meeting to talk about, not next--
That's true. That's true.
Table it, that's fine.
No, I, I, I do appreciate that, but you may not, it may not render the outcome that you want without the full board being here. And respectfully, sir, I do feel, I like the idea of what Chris mentioned as far as getting some more information from the solicitor, because my understanding was that we weren't limited, we were not able to limit it to just tech school, that we would be opening it up, and we wouldn't have control over that. So for those two reasons, not having the board here, and that question that I want clarification on, I'd like to motion it for next board meeting.
So she would have to have a second in order for that to be pulled from the agenda.
Motion to table doesn't require a second. Odo on our motion to table.
Okay, we're tabling the policy.
Only that particular item on the policy--
It may not stop public comment about it, right? So--
Mr. Sherman's point, I think he's right. He does have a right to speak to it.
Well, he could get up later during the general public comment, so you might want to, I guess would be a good idea for those folks that may want to talk, or may want to wait, to get a general idea what the board's thinking is, whether you're going to table them out. Those people who would like to speak tonight, let us take those who want to defer, they can defer.
That's exactly right. I don't want to take away time from anyone who does want to speak. I just would hate for us to table it, and you could, you know, you get the gist. So we vote?
Sure.
So are you tabling? Be approved in the--
So we're going to pull--
Yeah, the motion is to table item H specific to the second reading of policy 115 for next board meeting, after we get additional advice from the solicitor on if we can keep it just specific to tech school, and then have the conversation when the rest of the board is here, present.
All in favor?
Wait, we have the discussion about it, so--
Sure.
So--
Kim?
So, so let me take it back to why we wanted to read this, and that was because there was a discrepancy, and we wanted to end the discrepancy. By enacting this policy today doesn't mean that we can't readdress it in two months from now when we have more information, which is, I think, the appropriate thing to do. I think we need to have a well-rounded idea of it. But because there was a discrepancy in policies, we wanted to try to fix that. We need to read it the first meeting, read it the second meeting, equal out the policies. And if we want to go back and change the policy, that's what I think we were, we were hoping to do, and that's why we read it the last meeting. So, and as I understand it, and Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, is this, is it still that, is that, is that accurate, what I'm saying?
Yes. Yes, that's how we sort of got into this in the first place.
Right, so we have two policies that are outstanding, and we wanted to try to level that playing field as it sits now. And then in doing so, the people that were pushed to get in this year, we got them in. We can go back and evaluate, and we have time to evaluate that over the, over the course of the next several months, where we don't have to rush to judgment, we don't have to make emotional decisions on it, and we can have good dialogue where we can collect the evidence, and then make an educated decision on it. And so by pulling it--
Yeah.
--and not reading it, we'll go another month where there's discrepancy amongst the policy. And so while I agree that, as it sits today, the policy will create angst, I still believe that we need to go back and do our due diligence so that we can give them a fair shake, give the community a fair understanding of what, what we're going to be dealing with, and, and if we decide to change the policy, we change it. But there was a hidden one in the background, which has created this mass confusion amongst the community, and that's what we've been dealing with over the last month and a half or two months. So by pulling it tonight, I think, just doesn't take care of the issue. I mean, unless we're going to--
Keep it the way it is.
Well, my question is, that's a very good point that I didn't consider, but my next question would be, so let's say if we were to change this, the wording, other than what it is now, would we have to have another first and second reading?
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we do what Mr. McCucci wants, we would simply pass the policy as written for the second reading, which means we would prohibit homeschool students from attending tech immediately, starting tonight. And if any homeschool student who's in there now would stay, but they couldn't come in going forward. But we would immediately then take up the discussion again and decide if that's what we want to do or not. We'd throw it back to the policy committee, who's already gone over this. I mean, they've already made a decision. It was recommended by the policy committee, listening to all the evidence, to make this change.
See, I don't think, I think we, what we wanted to do was continue to discuss it, and what we had asked was, you know, for additional things, like, you know, would it be discriminatory to exclude one group versus another group, which is, which is, you know, essentially what, what somebody, you know, mentioned. Can you just limit your policy to one particular thing? I don't know that answer, but there was some concern about that. And there was, I think there's more due diligence, and I, I just think we have to let that. I mean, that's my opinion, again. We can vote however--
But I guess the question, you were part of the policy committee? I'm asking. I don't, I don't know. Okay, so, but you, did, did you vote to make this change? Because we're sitting here with the second reading--
People, you don't vote in policy, I mean, committee. You don't.
Make a recommendation, but I'm saying, how did, how did that get from your committee to a second reading tonight?
What happened was, there's still two, there's still two competing policies out there. It say two different, have two different languages. And so the thought of it was the last time, and I remember Kern was the one that actually took it on, because I think he, I don't think--
It was the Akmanowicz motion.
Yeah, what was it?
It was the Akmanowicz motion.
Yeah.
And there was a policy committee that Mr. McCucci wasn't able to attend, and so the recommendation came forward from that meeting, but you weren't at that meeting, so you wouldn't have heard that discussion, or--
Well, was it similar to what I just mentioned? I don't know.
Uh, no. No, the--
So, the motion, I'm sorry, are you--
Yes, I just want to make sure, because, well, that's how it came from the policy committee. It was from the meeting that, where you weren't able to be there.
No, no, because the first reading happened at the last meeting.
Correct. And then out of the policy committee meeting last week, it was referred for second reading and approval coming out of the committee.
Right.
But there were only two committee members present.
Correct.
One of whom knew that he was not going to be here tonight, so.
What's the harm, I guess, of keeping it the way it is, though, until, like, in my opinion, if we completely take it away, that's going to be a lot harder than to make, like, bring it back at all. Why, is there any risk to keeping it how it is now, since we're grandfathering them in any way?
Well, if you table it now, okay, and the board, as a nine-member board decides to go back on what the, what the policy committee has put in front of us, where we would say, okay, we want to let homeschool students attend, then this, I don't know if this would have to be voted on and defeated, or we could amend it, because essentially, you'd have to send it back to the policy committee, or maybe you could change it sitting here as a board, but you'd have to re, you've tabled something you're going to have to act on eventually. So either you change it, or you vote it down somewhere in the future, and then come back with what you, we as a board want.
So currently, there is a motion on the table to pull 15H policy 115 so that we can discuss it later. We are now going to take a vote of the five of us. Yes vote would keep it on the, a yes vote would pull it for later, would table it. A yes vote keeps it in there, and we'd be voting on it based on the policy committee's recommendations.
No, a yes vote would be a table until the next meeting, because the motion made by Mrs. Mitchell was to table it to the next meeting. If that is a, if three of you agree, then it's tabled till the next meeting. If three of you don't agree, then you have to proceed to determine whether you're going to vote on the change, which is to remove that permissive section from the policy that permits folks to be homeschooled and go to the tech school.
And I understand Mr. McCucci's point now. He just wants to close the loophole so that it's consistent, and then pick up the discussion going forward.
But what's the risk of just, what's the risk of keeping it the way it is? We're already allowing people to go this year. I know we want to be consistent, I think that's great, but I feel like, I don't know. I just, I worry that if we remove it, it's going to be that much harder to even bring it back at all.
Really? I, I don't, and I don't get that sense. I mean, it's saying that we're going to--
I don't get that sense either.
I don't know. I don't necessarily agree that it's, it's that way. I thought level on the playing field, and then--
Well, what if the policy committee decides that they don't want to have further discussion on that?
That's the chair of the policy committee's right?
Truth is, the full board can overrule the policy committee. The nine-member board can take a vote. We understand the policy committee hasn't brought this up. Are they going to? No, the policy committee has decided they won't do it. Well, the, the full board's going to take a vote right now, and we're going to make that change. Boom.
We can't do that, though, because you have to have a first and second reading. So how does that work, Jeff?
Well, but the board itself can effectuate a first and second read. If the policy committee chooses not to, the full board can proceed through the process.
So, therefore, then bypassing the process?
Well, you're not bypassing the process, you're just using the same process, but there's no policy committee recommendation to proceed with a modification to the policy. So, if the, if three members of the policy committee say, we don't want to have homeschool kids go to the tech school, but the majority of the board says, no, we disagree, then the majority of the board can proceed through the first read and the second read and adopt the revision.
Without the policy committee.
Without the policy committee having any recommendation related to that.
Okay. So, a yes vote leaves it in there? A yes vote pulls it, that's, tables it, and a no vote will keep it in there?
Exactly.
For, because there's five of us.
Do a roll call vote.
Do a roll call vote. Do you understand, Keith? The yes or no? Yeah? What would, what would you like to vote?
Oh, we do a roll call.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, the motion is to table item H on the policy committee agenda for 115.
115.
Yes means you're going to table it, no means you're not.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Anderson? Mr. Jackson?
I'm going to vote no.
Mr. McCucci?
No.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
No.
And Ms. Weidler. So that's three no, two yes, that means it stays. So in that case, I think we should allow for the public comment, right?
Yeah.
I was going to allow for the public comment, anyway, just for the record. Who is next, please? Yes, sir.
Joe. Tom Reinheimer, Milford Township, again. I just want clarification on my situation. In December, I was told that no homeschool student would be allowed to go to tech school. Therefore, I enrolled, me and my wife enrolled our son through Quakertown School District in the cyber system. Therefore, now he is in the cyber system through the school, and he is going to tech school. If something were to change, for whatever reason, and we pull our son from cyber through Quakertown, is he going to be grandfathered to remain in the tech school till he graduates?
I, I see your head going. I feel differently.
Yes, because you've already permitted a student to go to the tech school who was not in your cyber program. So you clearly would not want to prejudice someone who chose to proceed along that route based on the advice he was given by administration at that point.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think the board should just confirm that for him, so that he has an understanding, as opposed to me, who has no voting power.
So he will be grandfathered no matter what?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just to clarify something, we've been going through this since June. You know, I, I don't think the proper thought has been given to change in this policy. And I agree, we, I did not make the last policy meeting because I was unable to...
Ms. Del Rossi, I'm so sorry. Would you please give us your first name and remind us you're from Milford?
Yes, my name is Teresa Del Rossi, and I live in Milford Township.
Thank you.
I was unable to attend the policy meeting last week or two weeks ago. And there was going to be a presentation on the pros and the cons of allowing homeschoolers to attend. The policy meeting prior to that, certain things were discussed, and I can see that these were not followed up as they were supposed to be by the school district to find out what the other neighboring school districts are doing with homeschoolers attending their technical school. For instance, we keep bringing up special ed, and Ms. Edwards said that one of the risks is that if a child becomes homeschooled, then the services have to be given to them at home. I know for a fact, in a neighboring school district, that does not happen, okay? I don't know if they have proper documentation that the child can only attend the technical school, and they have these things in place, like Ms. Mitchell was suggesting and the person before me is suggesting. But obviously, the proper reviews, I feel, were not taking place, where they were supposed to contact the neighboring school districts, find out about transportation. Because again, that could be easily resolved by having the child have to go to the Quakertown High School and be bused from there, okay? I feel like a proper review and things that were supposed to be done were not done. I keep hearing over and over again that the two policies of the homeschoolers, 137 AR and 115 conflict. They do not conflict. They are here, they are here. There is nothing in the homeschooling policy that says homeschoolers cannot attend the technical school. There is, however, in 115 stating that non-public and homeschoolers may attend the technical school. Stop repeating that. It is false. It is false. Okay? As for the risk, okay, I firmly believe we were not allowed, at the policy meeting that I attended, to, to read the legal review, okay? But I believe fully in my heart that that is bias against homeschoolers. I believe the school district is being biased against homeschoolers. I will leave with two final points, okay? I've spent a lot of time, a lot of time, and I, it is the right thing that homeschoolers are not discriminated against. The public code, school code of 1949, Act 14, Section 502, which comes from a document that the, the school district uses that says that it's up to the district whether we should be allowed to attend the tech school. I called the education department, and I said, where is that from? Where is that in that document stated that the homeschoolers cannot attend? And she said, section 502. Well, I will read you 502. Pennsylvania statute that authorizes vocational and technical school states, "No pupil shall be refused admission to the courses in these additional schools or departments by reason of the fact that his elementary or academic education is being or has been received in a school other than a public school." That, to me, states clearly that homeschoolers should not be denied a public school education. And that's what you're doing if you change this vote and you take out and say homeschoolers cannot attend a technical school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Name and area of residence, please.
My name's Victoria Del Rossi, and I live in Milford. I am a senior in high school, and I attend Upper Bucks County Technical School. So I just wanted to make a few points. Going to tech school allows students to pursue their dreams before graduating. I know this firsthand. I thought that I would need to wait until college to pursue my dream of becoming a nurse. Because of going to tech school, I can get a jump start on that dream through the healthcare careers program. What about other homeschoolers who want to pursue their dreams? Just because you didn't go to school doesn't mean that you don't have dreams. Earlier, you heard from Dr. Kelly about trauma. Do you think, do you only worry about students in schools? What do you think happens psychologically to a homeschooler when their parent has to tell them that they cannot follow their dreams just because they are schooled at home instead of in a classroom? Please do not change the policy. Allow homeschoolers to attend the tech school. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. And Mr. Del Rossi.
My name's George Del Rossi from Milford Township. Coming to these meetings, as I have pretty much all summer, getting very frustrating because we, we, we seem to get over a hurdle of something and make a little bit of progress, and then we're going to come back to the next meeting to make a little more progress. And then, at that next meeting, we revert right back to the same questions and the same issues that we've been talking about at the last three meetings. There is no conflict of policies. You have one policy that says homeschoolers are allowed to attend the vocational tech school. That's it. What other policy do we keep talking about in conflict? That, that whole, that whole discussion you had when you tried to set it to ta, again, I don't know your terminology, to table it, that whole conversation was based on people saying there was a conflict between policies. There is no conflict. So, so that whole discussion just was, I don't even have the right word to describe it. It was a waste of time. There is no conflict. Can anybody show me the policy that conflicts with 115 that says very clearly? No, we've had this discussion at three or four meetings now. We're, we're, we're regressing, we're not making progress. I guess yous are going to have a vote now to try to table it, to change the language of 115. I think it's a terrible mistake, I think it's a wrongdoing. You're not fulfilling your obligation to the students, to the children of this district, which you have an obligation to educate. And if you change this verbiage in here, you're failing miserably in educating some of those children, who have a right. They live in this district, the, the risks that people are talking about are already there. Someone lives in this district, a child lives in this district, you have that potential risk. If it costs $200,000 to educate them for a year, you already have that. The fact that they enroll into the tech school means nothing. You already had that risk. It's already an assumed risk. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. Please, if you're going to vote on this now, do the right thing. Thank you.
My name's Chuck Schirmer, Richland Township. I served four years on the JOC down at the tech school and had the honor and privilege to be a chairperson of, of the JOC for a year. I've been following, following this and the policy changes. And initially, I, and my knee-jerk reaction was, you know, there's extra, extra handling involved, and there's, there's risks, and there are risks. Anytime you, you take in another student, there's, there's risks involved. And, and then I, I thought through just what tech school means to the 700 or so students that are there, at least the majority of them. And, and the type of kids that make the extra effort to get down to tech school from a homeschool situation, and the type of kids that actually, they really want to go to tech school, those are the kids you want to get there. Those are the kids you want to get there. You don't want to ban them from going there. I mean, you've gotten most of it right the last couple of years. This, you're wrong. And, and the policy changes a strike through through two words, two readings, God knows how many meetings, a strike through on two words. Don't get it wrong. Boot this back to the policy committee where it belongs, or, and just leave it the way it is. Or make a procedure where you minimize risk, you don't cost the district a million dollars, you make sure that there doesn't open the door to five other programs. The, the attorney that, that said the disaster strike ruling is probably the tech school attorney. Enough said there. There's, there's no additional risk, especially if you make it right, make the policy right. But strike through or homeschool just doesn't, it's, it's a weak sister. It was, it's a really, really poor effort. So...
So for the record, if this was read, if this was read what was supposed to be read, it would have been your vote, not ours.
Um, I, 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 I don't, we never, we, I never, we never addressed homeschooling.
That's what we were told.
We never once addressed homeschooling. I'm telling you. We did a lot of things, and I'll sign up for everything that I voted for. We never addressed homeschooling. And if I, if we did, I would have made darn sure it stayed in.
But would you, would you have to understand the financial risk of it? You just said it sure doesn't cost the district a million dollars.
Absolutely.
We don't know that it's going to do that.
It's not going to cost a million dollars.
We don't know.
Yes, you do. Come on. Come on. It's, it's, it's...
We have no idea.
You have how many homeschool kids? And what percentage of that? 190 homeschool. And how many do you have?
It's not about the tech school.
So make it smart.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Schirmer.
Make it smart. Just make it smart. You can make it smart. I understand. And you know, I, I don't like to spend money when you don't have to.
Thank you.
There's one more.
Mr. President, you might, I wasn't recognized earlier.
Absolutely, I apologize for not recognizing you.
I actually didn't raise my hand. I didn't come here to talk about this tonight. But I'm here now, and I'm Row Cabbage from Richland Township. And something very funny happened to me this week, and I feel like I just belong here tonight. And some of you may not like it, and I'm sorry, but this is my life. My husband, as a brief, I'm going to ask if I may possibly have one more extra minute if I need it. My husband was a tech school student. My mother was not fond of him for being a tech school student, quite honestly, and I married him anyway. I really do love the man, he's wonderful. He worked very hard in a quarry, and he was actually teaching at a tech school when he was offered a job by one of his students. The golden handcuffs were locked, he drove to Princeton, two hours there and back, ten, two, 10 years. And when he was there, he enlarged his department so that they needed to hire somebody else. They said, well, we're going to hire you, we're going to hire somebody else, we want to hire a college grad, so you have to go back to college. With five kids, and over seven years, my husband went back to college and he got his bachelor's. We made him walk for his associates and his bachelor's, and he was embarrassed, but he put on that captain gown and set an example for his kids. He, due to newspapers dwindling, had to change occupations, went to work for an engineering firm, pretty much doing the same thing, taking what the engineers came up with and using his technical knowledge to put things in. Worked there, had a friend say, hey, traffic's much nicer going out here. He moved over. And while he was there, people liked him, they appreciated his knowledge of both sides. They said, sir, we like what you're doing, but you really need a master's. We walked, within the last two years, we wa, we went up to Cedar Crest College, and we watched my husband graduate with his master's. He was probably in his new position about three months when they said, sir, what is your educational plan? And I am now married to a doctoral candidate. I think our world is changing on a lot of frontiers. Things that we don't even think about, and people we think about as tech school kids are different. What happened to me this week was this. I had three kids who graduated from college very well. I had one who went to college and said, I learned a lot, mom, and I'm really glad I went, but now I want to serve my country. And this week on Monday, he passed and was accepted. And I have one more kid, who while having gotten a five on the AP exam for Mr. Birch's class, having very good grades, went to college for six weeks, and called and said, I just withdrew from my classes because I was so bored here that I started taking my bed apart with my tools for something to do with my hands. Sometimes, a kid needs a tech education, and that's what my kid taught me this week. And I hope, whatever it takes, that somehow, something good may come out of tonight and the future, because I do have to gently disagree that putting things back can be a difficult thing. Thank you for listening to our story.
Thank you. Any other open comment this evening? Yes?
I wasn't registered.
Yeah, of course you can, absolutely.
Hi, my name is Julia Kemmehr from Hickok Township. I'm a sophomore this year.
Could you spell your last name for us? Thank you.
I was looking into going to tech school this year when I found out that Quakertown did not allow us homeschoolers to go into tech, when Palisades and Penridge did, even though we still pay our taxes. A good point was made earlier that we are still dreamers. We, we still have dreams we want to pursue, and technical school is still a way to pursue that. But it's almost like us homeschoolers do not have the right in this district, and I find that almost discriminatory for us. And I would like to, for there to be change for us homeschoolers to go to tech school in this district. And I believe that that could open up a lot of good opportunities for students in the future, and for me, because I would still really love to go to tech school, and I'm still fighting to get in. still fighting to get in. And everyone that I have spoken to about this issue always says, that's not fair and that is not right for homeschoolers to be almost discriminated against for not being allowed to get into tech school in this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open comment this evening? The Policy and Programs Consent Agenda.
Can we agree we want to pull that other, that one aside? Before, you can choose to go first or after, but I'm just saying that one's got to be pulled, right?
We literally just had a vote on that.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm talking about vote on it separately.
Just vote separately so we can, because we.
We're going to discuss that.
Does that make sense? We'll vote on all the other ones and then right after that, we'll vote on.
What happens if you don't do, like, oh, what happens?
Let's assume some of us want to vote it down. Then we have to vote the entire consent agenda down.
Correct. That's why you put it aside.
Okay.
That's my point.
Sure. So I need a motion to pull, uh, Policy H-115.
Second.
All right. So we're going to pull Policy H-115. And I also want to make a motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on. Discuss it.
No. We already discussed it. We're voting on it now.
You have to vote, you have to say all aye to pull it.
To pull it.
Oh, all in favor to pull, uh, Section H, Policy 115.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Up to you if you want to go first or after.
Um, and I also would like to pull 15H Policy 115. That is the student debt policy. Because some of us may want to vote no on that. Or yes. It is. Policy 617.
Oh, first reading, okay.
618.
It's 617.
Uh, 617.
I don't know, 617?
Oh, that's only a first read. It says approval for recommendations. It's under the.
If you feel strongly enough not to let it.
Oh, it is under the first reading category. I apologize. All the files, sorry. I, I misunderstood it.
Mine's updating now, so I can't see anything.
So yeah, it is actually for the first reading. So actually pulling it is, we're not voting on it, right? Okay. Uh, the policies that we'll be voting on this evening are Policy 115, Vocational Education Revised, oh no, but we pulled that. And then we have the Purchases Subject on Bid, Policy 610, Policy 613, Cooperative Purchasing, Policy 618, Student Activity Funds will be the three. Second reading and approvals tonight. Uh, first reading tonight will be Policy 617, the student debt. Policy 101, 4.1, Communicable Diseases. And then there are two policies that will be voted on to be retired this evening. 314.1 and 514.1 in regards to the communicable diseases, which I assume relate to the first reading that we're doing this evening.
Do you want to read down A through G, too?
I'm sorry, A through G? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Approval waiver agreement for student 23612. Approval for the waiver agreement for student 17295. Approved truancy services contract between the Bucks County Intermediate Unit and the Quakertown Community School District for the 2019-2020 school year. Approved tuition contract with Palisades School District for the 1920 school year. Approved contract between Pathway School Educate, excuse me. Approved contract between the Pathway School Emotional Support Program and the Quakertown Community School District for the 1920 school year. Approved contract between Fairworld Academy and Quakertown Community School District for the 1920 school year. And approved the contract between the Training Institute at Bradbury-Sullivan LGBT Community Center and Quakertown Community School District. And we touched on the policy recommendations. I did that first. We just pulled all of H? Is that what you were saying?
Just the one.
We pulled the 115, right? And then I covered the other ones in the beginning.
Make a motion to approve the items as iterated by our president there.
And I'm looking for a motion to approve the Policy and Programs Consent Agenda as presented with the exception of the Policy.
So moved.
Policy 115. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then secondarily, we're going to vote on Policy, H-Policy 115 separately right now. Motion, do we need a motion to vote on it? We do. Motion to vote on?
Motion.
And a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion on the, uh?
I was just curious about a couple of the parents who mentioned this, the conflict. Is, is, is it, is it a conflict or is it just as they were stating?
As I understand, as I understand it, there is no conflict in the policies. They're absolutely correct about that. But Mr. McCucci has suggested that there's administrative regulation, which is something that the parents typically cannot see, that tells the administration how to enforce the policy. And.
The, the issue was that 137 was changed to remove tech school for homeschooled students. That's the home education policy. The vocational education policy did not move through the approval processes to match. So the home education policy doesn't say technical schools or homeschooled students can't attend tech school, but it used to, to say that they could and that language was removed.
Okay.
So that's where the inconsistency is.
But because it's lacking does not mean there's a conflict. It simply means there's an ambiguity, so to speak.
The practice doesn't match the policy.
It means directly, the policy directly conflicts itself.
Well, so what, what happened was, and this is the way it was explained and clarified, if there were, there were, it was removed from the one and that was the one that was being enforced. And so there was kids that were coming, asking to go and not being allowed to enter tech school. So the other policy that was published to the public said that clearly in the language that they could attend tech school. So hence why at the last meeting, we said that everybody's grandfather, everybody can, today can sign up. As it stood, they could sign up. In the, in the interim, there was a legal opinion that was asked and rendered, not once, I think we got it twice. It stated that we should approach this with extreme caution. They actually, the language was fairly, according to Jenny, straightforward. So that's really where the discussion came up. So we had, we've had a lot of discussion around this and I, I agree, we are, we are spinning our wheels. What we need to understand is what does this mean in the long term? Because saying it's not going to affect us, it's not going to affect us, it really doesn't, hasn't affected anybody else, doesn't mean that we're not going to be affected by it. And a vote from us, again, I don't want to restrict anybody from going to school. If we want to let everybody in the Quakertown that needs to be educated, they should, I agree, they should have access. But we just have to understand what could that look like financially? What could it look like operationally? And those are the questions that we have to ask ourselves. Not an emotional, how do we feel about it? Because we, because I, I feel very strongly that everybody should get educated. I have a kid in tech school. I think the tech school's awesome. I think everybody that we can get to tech school would be great. But I just want for our district to understand that. Because in the competing side of the house, if we approve that, then we also have to say that we're willing to put money towards it and that money towards it means we're going to have to tax for it. There's no other way to make money about it. So.
But if they were, if they were, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt.
If they were in school today, you're 100% right. But what I'm saying is, the issue isn't tech school, right? The issue is tech school opens the door for other things, potentially. That's what the ruling said. That's not what Keith McCucci said. That's what the opinion said. And if you open the door for that, then you have to just understand, how are you going to, how are you going to fund that? Because if they were in our school, they may be in a program where there's 20 other kids going through the same program and they can get the education, as opposed to having to send somebody out one-on-one with them. So, so that's really the issue. The issue isn't tech school. The issue's the language of the tech school, but it opens the door for other things. And that's all, that's all the discussion is around that.
But as Mr. Spear had said, and he's right, it had been allowed since 1996 and none of this happened. And I think we're making a mistake. We vote for that.
And I think we're making a mistake as well. And I will say this. If these kids wanted some sort of special education, they could easily enroll into a public school system to get those services. So, and that was something that Mr. Anderson was mentioning was if, if, so, so if it's, if that's really what their end goal was, I don't see why they wouldn't just enroll them into the regular public education system so they could take advantage of those services. And if we've done this for however many years and we've not have any problem, I've read through the solicitor's opinion multiple times. And I, I appreciate his opinion as a legal expert. He is a little bit, I guess, biased being that it's a tech school solicitor. But I think we're denying, you know, taxpayer. He's not a tech school solicitor? Oh, I apologize. I stand corrected. So then who was this guy?
He's, he's got expertise.
He's our special education legal counsel.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's who he is.
Okay.
And the, the issue regarding the provision of services, whether a student is enrolled or homeschooled, has to do with where the services take place. So at the policy committee meeting, Mrs. Pollan raised a relatively recent issue about a case where a student inquired about being able to enroll at the tech school and required special education services that would have had to be provided in the home. And we don't, we don't have any teachers that travel to home, so we would have had to come to you to add staff to do that. If a student enrolls with us, they participate in the program that is in the school building already. And so often there's not an exact incremental cost to adding a student to a program. So that was part of the discussion at the policy committee meeting, which I believe is part of why the members that were there made the recommendation that they did. So it is, it, it's not a, it will never happen risk. And it's probably not like a million dollar a year risk either in reality, but it is a risk. So this particular family decided not to pursue what they were inquiring about, but it's an example of why the legal opinion is written the way that it is and why we have recommended against making a change that creates that kind of open-ended concern or liability.
Did we ask this attorney specifically if we could, why didn't we ask the attorney if we could limit it just to tech school? Because that was the question that was posed and that seems to make sense to me.
I think when you allow dual enrollment, at least according to the opinion, and I guess different attorneys could interpret it differently, but when you allow dual enrollment, it's hard to say we're going to allow dual enrollment for this, but not for this.
Is there any case, like law basis? I, I guess what I'm wanting to know is, where does that come from? Have there been cases that have been won, you know, based on his opinion?
We would have to go back to him and, and ask for that clarification. Because I don't, I am not an attorney and I don't, I don't know.
I think, I think we should have had all of that information before we decided to have this up for a vote. Because we're going to sit here and possibly deny some of these homeschool students whose parents pay taxes in Quakertown an education through tech school. I, I think it's wrong. I think it's a mistake.
The, uh.
Unfortunately, Mrs. Wade is not here to explain her position for her.
Which is why, yeah, I would, I would have preferred that, too.
We, we took a vote earlier whether or not we were going to table this. And I voted no. The reason I voted no is because I wanted to come up for a vote, so I can vote against it. All right? The issue about whether or not the policies conflict has been gone over a number of times, but one of the things I think we all agree on is that the one policy clearly states currently that if you're a homeschool student, you can go to tech school. That's what the policy says. I would hope that if there's a student who's homeschooled now, who wants to go to tech school and has come to the administration and asked that question, that the administration has told them they can. And if that's not what the administration has been telling them, I would hope that the five of us would unanimously direct the administration to begin that policy. The reason I'm going to vote no is because I believe that we should be allowing tech, the tech school as a possibility for homeschool students. I understand the risks. I just don't understand why every other school district has the same risks, but do it anyway. And why we are so concerned about our monetary obligations when so many others, more wealthy, less wealthy districts are going in that regard. So, again.
Who's less wealthy?
Bristol Borough? Morrisville?
Palisades.
Palisades got lots of cash. They might be, Palisades got a lot of money.
CB West has more money. I mean, Central Bucks has more money.
But I'm just saying.
Hey, and that's, that's what I want. Like, I'm okay if the board wants to go with the risk, and I've said that from day one, as long as you understand what you're getting yourself into. Which is, which is just make sure you're willing to raise taxes should the need arise because we opened this up. That's it. That's all I said. But likewise, if you want a homeschool, you know, a homeschool student wants to come in to the, and take a physics test or physics class, I mean, do we allow, we allow that?
That's, that's allowed by state. It's, it's.
Right. But again, the reason, but again, what I'm, my point here.
You're saying.
Let's not go down a rabbit hole here. But again, my point here is.
I know they can, they're allowed certain things.
I'm trying to leave the door open, as it is now, for homeschool students to attend tech.
Yeah. We take the risk every single day on students who are not necessarily in homeschool environments, who have these special needs anyway.
But in voting no, in voting no, what it does is allow it open.
Right.
And then you can consider, again, back to the policy committee, but it hasn't closed the door. And again, I don't want what the administration has been telling homeschool students, but I hope they've been telling them that the policy committee, the policy currently allows them.
No, they weren't. That's why this gentleman.
We had this discussion, I mean, Dave, you and I looked at each other. The policy says they should go, right? That's what the current policy is. So I'm just saying, there's five of us here. If the administration's not telling them they can go, they need to start telling them they can go. Because that's what the policy is. We're going to rethink it, we'll rethink it. But right now, that's what the policy is. That's what I believe.
And I think based on the vote tonight.
But that's why we're reading it tonight, because the point was last week, let's, hey, let's put it the way that they wanted it 10 years ago.
If it changes tonight, then it changes. But if it doesn't change tonight, the current policy.
Will stand.
Correct. But, but has the administration been telling them they can't go to tech?
Yes.
They should not.
Yes, we discovered that a month ago.
Prior to the last month, we believed we were giving people correct information in compliance with the policy.
No, I get it, I get it.
When 115 not being updated came to light in June.
Right. I understand, I understand.
But prior to that, we were giving the answer that was consistent with what the policy committee three years ago decided.
We admitted that the last.
So, right. So it's.
But, right. But again, I'm.
Oversight.
So now, if you vote to not change the policy, then obviously we will comply with that going forward. But we weren't prior to it.
Meaning as well.
Correct. Correct.
We recognize that there was an error.
Right. We fixed it.
As the policy stood, we said, let's go with it.
Let's vote. Let's do it.
Yes, we do. So just waiting for our president.
All right. So we can always bring it back up for a vote later on, but we can also vote on it tonight and see what we want to do.
We have to vote on it tonight.
There's a motion in the second, on the table right now. We're in discussion.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
A yes vote.
A yes vote, a yes vote removes that provision from your current policy. A no vote. A yes vote, a yes vote removes that provision from your current policy, a no vote leaves it the way it was.
And we can always still review it again later.
Correct.
You can review it anytime.
We can.
That's what I'm saying. Let's vote on it.
All right.
Roll call.
Did you want to do a roll call there?
So, the, correct me if I'm wrong, because my head's spinning right now. The motion, it's motion to approve...
Policy 617.
Policy 115, Item H, Policy Number 115, on the Policy and Programs Agenda. A yes vote approves it, a no vote leaves it the way it is.
Correct.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yeah, I'm torn. Um, no.
Four noes, one yes. Stays the way it is.
Four.
Four.
Oh, four.
Four.
Congratulations.
No, I mean, it's clarity now for everyone. It's not really congratulations.
It's not clarity yet, that's the problem.
No, it's pretty clear.
No, it's clear.
Well, there's still the conflicting ordinance, uh, policy. We've, we've given direction.
So then we, what we need to do is instruct it to take Policy 137 back to policy.
Right.
You might want to let Jen know that we've, we're going to push hard against forbidding homeschoolers from tech, going to tech school.
I'm sure, yeah, we'll talk about it.
Wait.
Okay, so wait, can we move on?
Right, so just, just...
All right.
That policy stands, so can we...
Gentlemen.
...recommendation to send 137 back in language?
You guys can do that, you don't even need our permission.
Yeah.
Where the policy committee will be, will be that.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
All right, so Nancy, can we, Nancy, can we make sure that we bring that back up in policy, too?
I don't think you have to now that the intent is clear. So if the intent is clear, the difference before was language had been removed, which then created a murkiness in intent, but there isn't any language in 137 that prohibits it, it just doesn't specifically allow it.
But I, I still think it's clear, but, but to Heath's point...
I think you've now made it clear. So now that it's clear, I don't think, I don't, I don't think we would need to rewrite the other one unless you want to be explicit in the...
I would want to discount Keith's concerns. I would still like the policy committee to, to, to look through it, and I'm just saying, I, I don't, if he, if he...
Don't waste anybody's time.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
How much is it going to cost? Right.
That was, that was the only thing I, I cared, not, not even the cost, just, you know, what I said last meeting was the whole operationalizing, you know, where does it end? Does, you know, kids come into school and take a class here, a class there? You know, those are the questions that I had, that nobody had answers for. And so if the answer is, "We're going to allow tech school," then I would imagine that we're going to allow them to take full advantage of the school a, as they're, as they're allowed to, and I'm cool with that, too.
Well, I think that's a separate conversation.
I, I don't think it is. That was my conversation.
It's, well, it may be your opinion that it's, it's not a separate conversation, but I, I mean...
That's exactly what the solicitor said, that was, that was the point.
That was, I, no, that, we can talk offline about it, but I, I don't know why this is coming up now, when we've already voted on it, and I don't recall seeing anything in the solicitor's opinion about other academic programs. I saw him specifically talking about special education, uh, programs.
All I'm saying is that it should be, in my mind, you know, open it up, right?
You just two seconds ago voted against it, and now you're saying, "Open it all up"?
I did, because what, what I wanted to do was level the playing field, and then I wanted to have a very deep dive into this to understand the full thing. It didn't go that way, so let's...
And I understand exactly where Keith was coming from, because I almost did the same thing, and actually frankly, I think everyone expected me and you to kind of go the same way, but, um, yeah, right, I am too. I just like to know how much it's going to cost. Like, like you, like, what are the long-term projections? How do we work this into the budget? What are the logistics of it? I, I kind of feel the same. But at the, at the end of the day, you know what? Students need to go to school. And I, and I think, you know, it'll work out in the end, right? Yeah.
I thought at first you said, "I disagree." I was like, "Wait a minute."
Uh, information items, SAP year-end report. Counsel of Southeastern Pennsylvania, do I need to read this off? Do we know it? No? Board comments for new board business. Do any board members have any new business? General public comment. Anybody from the public have any general comment before we close? Uh, calendar items, uh, let's see.
May I call attention to the first meeting of the Start Time Committee, which is October 1st, Tuesday at 6:30? We had 11 parents that volunteered to serve on that committee, but it's, it's open to anyone, so if I say it out loud publicly, maybe we'll attract some additional stakeholders or people who are interested in the topic.
That's great, maybe Gary can shoot out some tweets.
I'm sure Gary will tweet away.
Sounds good, man. Uh, October 1st, start times, parent meeting, uh, committee meeting here in the community room, uh, at 6:30 on October 1st, which was a Tuesday, Nancy, and said. I'm not going to read through all of these subcommittee meetings, spare you all. October 3rd, we have a facilities meeting, finance meeting on October 10th, October 17th, policy committee. October 27th, 22nd, goals committee. October 24th, education and curriculum meeting. Work session meeting on October 24th, uh, regular board meeting, rather, excuse me. Uh, November 7th, we will have a facilities committee meeting. November 12th, we will have a goals committee meeting. November 14th, we'll have an education and curriculum committee meeting, and then another regular board meeting. November 21st, we'll have a policy committee meeting. And December 5th, we'll have a facilities and a reorganization meeting for our newly-elected school board members. And? Motion to adjourn.
Move. All of it.
I think that passes unanimously. Uh, I'll give the second to Ron. It might have been Keith, though. Thank you, sir.